To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
I want to just say it's nine eleven today, and all happened back then, and remember all the people that we've had lost. Okay, gonna get a motion to call a meeting to order.
Make the motion, second.
Motion to approve the agenda.
Move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
General public concerns.
Let me move the minutes.
Oh, I'm sorry. Through the minutes were eight twenty-eight.
I would make the motion to approve those minutes, second.
You have a first, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I want to welcome everyone here. Does anyone have any comments from the general public? Roger, you said?
Yeah, I haven't cleaned that out yet, I can't help coming to it. Dirt on each end and dirt in the tube, I want to clean that out.
Yeah, the driveway?
Yeah, it's been a year and a half, and I haven't done it yet. Ben knows about it, went to him, and that needs getting done. And I got that post I gotta move, smidgen on me, that ain't getting done either. I told him I wanted to be there to-
I heard something about the post, so-
What's that?
I have talked to someone about the post.
I know, but they haven't done it, they haven't called me, and said when they're gonna do it.
Okay.
They gotta get it down in writing to when they get it done.
Well, I know that they've been working on County K with the shouldering, and I suppose he's got it on the list. That's about all I ever know.
Okay.
He'll be here at tenish, if we can bring it up to him.
They're gonna clean the drive and that post up.
If it's on the list, I'm sure they got it written down, but we'll double check with him to make sure.
I got the wire done, I just wanna get it back together for a while, you know, or get that smidgen out, and that drag like, clean that tube out, clean the ends.
So you want to extend the driveways, is that what you're doing?
Yeah, I got the permit here and a half ago, nothing gotten done yet.
All right, we'll follow up on it.
Shouldn't dig that long.
No, it should not.
No.
All right.
If that's all I got, I'm just-
All right, thanks, Roger.
Yeah, thank you.
Anyone else? Jana, will have you come up there.
You got a hand up there, Rick.
Oh, sure.
I talked to you here a week or two ago about fix on a tile out west of town, didn't know if anything happened with that, or what's going to be done. Dutch and Austin had talked to us about doing some work, and I think it's a county issue, and that needs to be fixed, it's their responsibility.
Is that the one on by the county farm?
Yes.
The one that goes under-
And Austin were been fighting that for years. There's a tile that goes underneath the road there, it needs some attention, guys.
Yeah, when I talked to Paul on that, or I talked to Dutch a couple, several times on it, and Paul said they, I don't remember if they, did they jet that at one time?
They have.
He said it thinks it's further out into the field than it is up under the road. I don't have a clue what. Do you know anything about it?
On the Nostrom side?
Ah, yeah.
I believe so.
I think that's what Paul said, was it was, what they indicated when they jetted some water through it, that it was further out in the field than up by the road.
What Nostrom explained to me, they, at the time they were out there, they think that it's collapsed underneath the road and sucking sand. I don't know.
I don't know either.
Can we look at it this fall, once the crops out, and dig it up and get a good look at it?
No. Nostrom thinks it goes east in the ditch.
Oh, right.
It collapsed under the road one time, so we thought the county put a tile in that went east on the south side of the road, down to about twenty rods, and there's the tile was under the road there. I don't know.
From the corner?
No.
No.
It would be just a little bit west of the midsection.
Oh, it's west of the midsection, okay.
It's right, you can almost guarantee there's gonna be a drowned out spot every year now, in that corner.
They've harvested a lot of crops, year after year, so, I don't, so you dig it up, you don't know for sure, but I can't believe that it wouldn't get way better on the other side, it was actually taking water. I think that's underneath the road, until they look-
When I talked to Dutch, he said they thought it was clear back when they resurfaced that road, and they did some shoulder work out there, and that's when he thought it first appeared.
It's gotten progressively worse. I have one more issue too.
Yes.
I had two landlords talk to me about an assessment, it's one twenty-six, right?
Yep.
On DD one twenty-six, pretty big bill that came through here the last month or so, nobody quite seems to have an account of what was charged, and what exactly is being charged out to the landowners on that. It's pretty major for a drainage district, it's already been settled and paid for supposedly, and I know there's been some fixes on brand new structures out there that should've been taken care of anyway, so.
Okay.
I don't think that ought to go back on the county or the landowners, because I don't think, there's one, I call it the Webb Farm in Section eleven, that's had a hole in it for years, it's been sucking dirt, and needs to be addressed. I don't know if that's, we don't know what's being charged.
Is that thing like a fix somewhere?
I don't know.
My apologies for our records, I don't know you what it's-
Randy Walton.
Randy Walton?
Yeah, I've got a hundred dollar assessment on forty acres, a hundred dollars an acre on forty acres for repairs, and that seems, should've put the whole tile in for that.
Well, and it's a brand new tile, and they kept telling us it doesn't need anything for a hundred years.
Yeah.
That's why I've got a problem with that.
Yeah, we'll have to check it out, see where the repairs were actually done, and-
One of the landlords called me, are you Trish?
No.
No, no.
He said they talked to Trish, and he really still didn't get an idea of what was being charged, and what was charging them for.
Okay. Well, the people that do our repairs, they document pretty well, so we should be able to track it now. They take photos and things like that, so.
Trish told me there'd been two repairs made, the one in the Webb Farm that Randy's talking about, that had, when that first, the first, within the first year, it was repaired by Denver Underground, because they had a big suck hole in. It was repaired one other time by somebody else, and this is the third time the suck hole was down on the same intake, at the end of that tile, in the Webb Farm. And then she said there was a, Denver Underground must've hit a tile and not known it in the Kirkock Farm, and they repaired one that they'd broken there. She said that's all it was, she said she charged thirty-five thousand dollars for that, and I thought that was a little high. That's really high.
That sounds like a lot.
On a new structure.
Yeah. Okay, we'll check it out. Anything else?
I wanted me to leave that post, that's all.
Okay.
See ya.
Okay. Jana? Thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
The city of Laverne sent a letter, they acquired abandoned property there in Laverne from a tax sale investor in July of this year, and now they're asking that taxes for the current year be abated. Looks like two parcels, no, just one parcel. But it's actually-
Actually, any interest?
Pardon?
Interest also?
Yeah, it's a total of two hundred and sixty-four dollars. The city, it'll be taxed exempt as soon as it hits the next tax year.
I don't see on here, Jana, legal, could you get me a legal on that, and give it five, two chances? All I see is the address.
Yep.
We've pretty much done this in the past, haven't we, Jana?
Yeah, they, cities are cleaning up their abandoned properties, and-
I'd maybe go ahead and make taxes and assessment for the parcel, is that correct?
I'll second.
First and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
That was two sixty-four, but it says two sixty-three.
Well, there was one more month of penalty, so I didn't realize the timing of it would hit Labor Day, and-
Good, takes your board out for it.
Yeah, but one more month of penalty on there.
Carl, clarification, you said taxes and interest?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, you got another one also?
Yes, then, the second one I have is the mobile home in the Springvale, what's it called? Yeah, Springvale cattle land up there in Forest Estate. They acquired a property that was not paying their taxes, and the mobile home was demolished, and it's been removed, and the property owner's, or the previous owner's gone, and the mobile home part paid for the removal of the mobile home, just to clean up that location, and so since there's no way to collect the taxes from the previous owner, we're looking to have those abated for the mobile home and the B O L A on that twelve Monterey Circle.
Okay. Actually, the mobile home, not the property, right?
Yes, just the mobile home, the mobile home part will still pay the tax on the lot, so this is just because the mobile home's been demolished and gone, and it's never gonna get collected, and might as well just take off the book.
Make a motion to abate that. Second that.
You have a first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, I have something else.
Bill? Would you like to come up? A little early, but-
What's that?
You're Bill Spence?
Yes, please.
Yeah, come on up. If you're ready, we're a little ahead of time.
You want a license now, or?
I've got a couple guys that are enrolled too, so.
If you want to wait, we can jump ahead and do some other things.
Doesn't matter to me.
Well, if you got other people-
Other day probably like to speak up.
Okay, we'll just wait, we'll do some of these other things. Okay.
Do the claims.
Then do our claims.
I reviewed the claims, it looks to me like two hundred and twenty-seven thousand one hundred and twenty nineteen cents, I moved approval thereof.
Second then.
Okay, we have a first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. I put on the agenda here, discussion on possible action on the following, changing work hours for secondary roads. I downloaded ISAC, I've visited with a couple counties that have done that, they feel like they're more productive, spend less time going to the job site, typically now, we, in summer months, they go to the shop, get things fluid up, get to the job site, work about six, six, six and a half hours, and then they gotta head back. Go a longer days, you get more work time in, and one less trip to the job site, I think it's a way to save money. I know some employees would like it, some wouldn't like it, I don't know what the rest of board's thoughts are on it. The counties that do it, they usually do it through the, just the summer months, daylight savings time.
Kinda like that idea, the more, you know, I've thought about the proposal, that does make pretty good sense, too.
I mean, I'm sure there's lots that probably still should have one or two people at the county shed, just keeping them open for those emergencies that would work, I mean, it'd be quite a scheduling thing, trying to work it out for people.
Well, I wondered if you could do the, if you did four ten-hour days, and then every other week, or every other month, it'd only be, what, three months?
Yeah.
We get three shops every other month, you'd rotate one of the shops working on Friday,
And then you cover the whole county.
And then they could have the three-day weekend the opposite way.
Yeah, there's probably lots of different ways you can do it.
Would you make that encompassing of the office staff, too, or just the working?
No, no. Secondary roads.
Secondary roads.
Just the shops.
Secondary roads.
You could say once in a while they have contracts going, and they have to have two revision on the weekends.
But if you had one shop working Mondays, and the other shop working Mondays, then you would have the full week covered, so.
If you didn't have that way, you wouldn't have to call someone in and get that-
Right, right.
Yeah.
You'd call them one of the shops, so.
I'm sure there's ways to cover it, I just thought maybe we should talk to our union rep, and approach them, and see if they're of interest, or maybe they're not, makes sense.
I like, and I do like the kinda summer months, the daylight savings time months, because that's when the, you know, like you said, the back and forth, to fix this, to get that.
Yeah, I mean, it costs money to run the-
All over the place.
Out to the field, and they cut down the-
I even think with the road maintenance, the road graders, you know, unfortunately, good, bad, or indifferent, you know, the shops are three, and they do have travel time, so when they get out there to grade their roads, they can get more miles of road graded in a day.
Yeah, or more shoulders mowed, or whatever.
Any, anything.
So we have to, we'd propose that to our union rep to-
Bring it to their rep.
To bring it to their attention, to see if they'd be interested, and then it is basically brought back to us?
Yeah, and then we'd have to bring up the change, change their time.
Some different proposal, change in their union contract to-
Yeah.
Well, I don't have a problem with it.
It's gonna be like, we want to try.
If we have the ability to get more bang for the buck, four days out of the week, I think that they would like the ability to have Friday, Saturday, Sunday, and then one shop would be the other way. They'd have, they'd have to work on the Friday, and they'd get the Saturday, Sunday, Monday off.
They'd have a week with eight, five, eight-hour days, and then next week they'd go to ten or four, ten, whatever.
That'd be a good way to cover this contracting job, too, if they would. That'd be a good way to do it, Bruce.
If somebody needed to haul dirt, to somebody's putting in a box, they could do it, or whatever they gotta do. I think it'd be worth trying.
Well, you do have to propose it, that's the first step.
Yeah, I thought it'd be something to look at.
I think it is, you know, where it's taken a look at. Are you talking, you know, the staggering thing, it's still, the four-ten-hour days, it's just that one shop is on those days a different day? I mean, they get Monday off versus Friday type thing?
You could do that, too.
That's the way I would look at it.
I think that's, you know, so we're not-
And then they'd still be on all four ten-hour days.
They're still on all four, but-
Well, we wouldn't have to call someone in, if something happens, you'd have such a ton of jobs.
So they're still gonna be doing their thing, and if it's-
And there'd be no overtime, it'd still be done, and the same amount of work done, and less time spent in the tube, I mean.
There is no emergency, or big project, or anything, they just go about their-
Yeah, and like Carl says, they'd probably get rid of some for comp time.
They just, yeah, they just go about their business, doing their thing, and if there is a project, and there's only one shop open, they're able to take care of that project.
Well, if they're doing it right now, next year we'll have that other mower, and God knows, there's a lot of shoulders out there that-
Yeah, maybe more.
Give them time for that, so that, it sounds very reasonable, I say, do we have to, well, do anything other than just alert or notify?
I think we just need to get, talk, have a visit with Renee. So, I could give her a call, and, and-
I think it's a great idea.
You wanna put that in minutes, that Rick had a great idea?
Yeah.
First one.
Well, I don't know.
Thanks, Carl. None, none whatsoever.
We respect you, Rick, we do.
Only took you five years.
Well, that sounds good.
All right, done. Oh, okay. What was that? Oh, okay. Okay, you got one more thing, okay, beans, we're still on that topic. Also, want to put on mowing of the shoulders and possible spraying for next year. I might table that till Paul's here, so he can hear what we're saying.
Do we just have a brief comment on that?
Sure.
Obviously, Bruce just alluded to it, and I think the reason it's on here is they need to get the shoulders mowed more often. The spraying, at this point, and all that's on the agenda, as far as spending any money for spraying right now, it's, in the grand scheme of things, some point. I think that money's better spent next year with the discussion of the spraying.
I think so, too.
So, there you go.
All right, well, we'll bring that back up when Paul's here, and would you like to come up? We have approval and disallow twenty seventeen Homestead Military and Disabled Veterans Tax Credits Applications. Every year we have some pull off, or something, come on, don't we?
Mm-hmm, we do. Our office reviews all of the Homestead Military and Disabled Veterans Credits once a year, and this year we are bringing those to you. We have a hundred and sixty-two new applications. There are a hundred and forty Homesteads and twenty-two new Militaries. And those are all right here for you.
So is that a higher number than, way higher, or average, or?
No, I think that's just about average.
So it was one forty-one?
A hundred and forty new Homesteads and twenty-two new Militaries. So that, that is a good thing, if you know of anyone who has purchased property recently, please encourage them to come and sign if they haven't.
Do I have to sign everyone's? Oh, I just seen at the bottom of his sign, it said, I was gonna keep my hands-
Maybe they have it for you.
Well, you have a stamp, start stamping, yeah.
I think you have, Paul.
We have a total of two hundred and seven. That would be a hundred and fifty-three Homesteads, fifty-one Militaries, and three Disabled Veterans Credits. So a total of two hundred and seven are coming off.
How many new, or how many total have we got of total disability veterans?
You know, I don't know the answer to that. I would say maybe about ten.
I think that's right, I think eleven is what I, what I said to the thing.
Eleven?
Jana, what causes the change in, you know, adding and subtracting of these credits?
When someone passes away, when someone does not occupy the home for a particular reason, maybe they've passed away, or sold the property, or they've moved, or maybe it's a rental property, because in order to have a Homestead exemption, you have to own the property, and you have to live there and occupy it as your home.
I see, maybe went to a facility, and then they rent their home out.
That is possible.
So the homeowner has to live in the home, it can't, so they rent it out, then it doesn't qualify.
That's correct. However, there is a provision, if you own your home, and you have gone to a care facility such as maybe the care center, and-
You might be coming back home, I see.
Right, you can still have your Homestead exemption. And we do have four new Disabled Veterans Credits to be approved also.
Okay.
When's the deadline, Jana, for applying? Are they all the same?
July first.
So this year's already done, the next July first would be for eighteen.
Two thousand and eighteen applications.
Right.
It takes us a little while every year, both through each one.
Yeah, that's a lot of-
I know our office very much appreciates all their efforts, because it takes a lot of time to go through and do all that, things like that.
You're welcome.
So, how do you, where do we start with, just one motion?
I think with one motion covers it all.
Yeah.
Just make approval.
Make a motion to approve the two thousand and seventeen Homestead Military Disabled Veterans Tax Credit.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, a first and a second.
You said approve, approve and disallow, because you've got some cancel-
No, approval. Oh, yes, approval and disallow.
Okay.
So, sorry about that.
That's right, just wanted to clarify.
Second that as stated.
Okay, any more discussion?
With the numbers that you quoted, right?
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
That was tongue twister.
Good work. Thank you.
Thanks.
Rick, you have to sign everyone in, too.
No, I guess I give a damn.
Oh, come on, that'll keep you busy for a while.
Yeah, and I suppose I could, that's a lot. Yeah, I'll be here till one.
Is Todd in trouble, or did he make the agenda?
He's asking to come.
He's here, he must've stepped out.
Okay.
I guess he's here a minute.
Yeah, I think he's waiting.
We're waiting for you.
He's waiting for some other people to show up. Okay, do you have any other items you want to talk to us about?
Um, not that I can think of right offhand. Things seem to be going okay in the courthouse.
Okay, good.
No big issues with anything that I'm aware of, and-
All righty, we're gonna slip through our committee reports, then.
All right.
What, are we gonna have to go back to, what, the twenty-eight? Yeah, we were there. So on August twenty-ninth, I had my USMOL meeting over Neil Grove, over the phone, or over the polycall, they have a couple of changes over in their district off, or over in their main office over there, with some personnel, and they're getting all cranked up for the new year with all their programs, the toy, or the, the backpacks for kids, and pretty soon they'll be running the coats for kids and all of that, so all of those programs are getting wound up now that school's starting again. On the first, Friday the first, I had our meeting down in Eldora for Central Juvenile Detention, that's always an eye-opener for, for the numbers that, of Humboldt is, is a member of that, I can't, I don't have it right offhand, oh, here it is. In two thousand and nine, their budget was just a smidge over two million dollars. Two thousand and seventeen, our budget is just a smidge over seven million dollars. So, the amount of, you know, activity that they have over there, with kids and transferring, and, and they're also starting in drug testing over there, which is becoming quite a, a issue for them, but they've got some, they asked again about our transporting, if we were ever in the need, and one time we told them that we would possibly do that, and I don't know if Dean has taken advantage of that yet, but they have transporters all over the state, so as that improves, we might need to get into a bind where we've only got one or two deputies that are working, and if somebody's gotta go somewhere, well, we need to look into this, because they have the ability-
I'm sure it'd be cheaper.
Yeah. Their facility, we got to go into the new part of the facility, I don't know for you guys that haven't been down there, but this is the, this is the facility, this is the new, the new section that, and that's, you know, it's kind of a, kind of an eye-opening experience for, when you go down there, because they got the ten-foot-high fence with the razor blade or wire, and you walk in, and it's like, wow, you know, and all these kids are in there, it's just kind of a scary, scary thing, but all is going well down there, I think that with the people they have in place, they're, they're doing a good job with the-
I think Moore County's coming in all the time, too.
Yeah, we're clear to, over to Dubuque, we're almost over to Cherokee, and Cherokee has a facility, they'll figure that out.
That's just the boys, or the boys.
Boys. Then on Monday, I went and visited with the farmer over on the Thoden issue with the trail and the trees, and he was curious to know if, if the trails got to pay part of that repair cost for that tile issue that they had over there, and visited with Trish, and we're gonna talk to make sure when Rick gets in here. I also drove up by the pond up there in one twenty-five, and it looks like they're progressing also up in there. And Marsha was actually working, finishing up some of the dirt work there on Monday, so after that, I was, that's all I had for the two weeks there. And a reminder, Wednesday, this Wednesday at four thirty is the mobile food pantry down here at the court, or at the food court and fairgrounds for anyone interested.
You make it like a piker, you worked hard.
No, I just, I don't know about that, I was around.
Okay, Monday the twenty-eighth, I went out and talked to, our senators and representatives of the Farm Bureau of Angler again, gave them the pictures that we talked about. And then on Thursday, you know, Wednesday of this week, I had Iowa County's Technology Services Meeting in Des Moines, and it's a program where they're developing a program that providers can all use, reporting, it's gonna save a lot of money in the long run, a lot more efficient, and it's just advisory committee that ISAC board has to approve all the things we do anyway, so we give it our best, and we send it to Peggy Lederweiler.
And what day was that, Colonel?
That was Wednesday the sixth. That was the extent of my meeting.
Okay, Monday the twenty-eighth, I had BA- Okay, uh, Monday the twenty-eighth, I had a VA meeting, group claims. Wednesday the thirtieth, had a Region Five hazmat meeting. Um, they are now a five oh one C three nonprofit, and they're gonna be raising money for a new truck. Um, the other one is several years old. I think this one's gonna cost them a half a mil. I'm not real sure on that, but they're gonna try to raise money to get a brand-new one. They just ended up headed for a training session and blew a tire, tore up a lot of the fiberglass box and stuff. So they had some repairs and stuff on it. And on, uh, Wednesday afternoon or Wednesday evening, we had a Midas meeting. It was a supper meeting and, uh, Grinbeck and Sexton was there. So I had another visit with them. And, uh, they answered good questions for some of us. There was a lot of people questioning them and got a response. Um, then this week, the sixth, had that pictenary training. And it was a real good session. I think, uh, we picked up quite a little bit on that. And that's all I had.
Okay, before I forget about it, yes, I was at the spectrometry training on, uh, the sixth also, on that morning. And I agree with Dave, that was very good. Uh, really got to up to speed on how that whole program works. It's fantastic program for the county to have and the cities in the county to have. There was very group of people there for that training and it was very good. So that was the spectrometer thing last, what was that, the Wednesday?
Yeah, Wednesday.
And then back to the week of the twenty-eighth, on Monday afternoon, that's a building's families meeting in Clarion. Uh, everything is going well there. They do have the new director, McKinley Bailey. Uh, he's getting up to speed. That whole, uh, organization is moving along just fine. So that is good. Then that evening, attended the Farm Bureau supper. And as Carl mentioned, uh, Tim Grandbrink, Mike Sexton were there, visited them a little bit and just got to visit with the people that went to the Farm Bureau supper. So that went real well also. That's what I had.
Alrighty, going back. To the fourth, I was there for the Farm Bureau supper, sat and had supper with Tim. And then on the seventh, I was out at DD six, checking on the tile. They're putting tile on the ground pretty rapidly right now. And it looks to be going very well for them. They're on both sides of the, of the hard surface road. Um, BD three, checked on them that day. He didn't have to be there that day when he went out there. Got there late, it was about six thirty. And, uh, then on the eleventh, excuse me, I got that wrong. Seventh he was out there. Yeah, that was at noon. I was up there on the seventh. And, uh, I believe they had built a new bucket for their long reach. And he was, to me, it looked like he's doing an excellent job. It was nice, clean bottom. You could see where he actually got the muck off and was down to the original depth of the, the ditch. And, uh, he did make the comment that, that engineer, he says, he's just on my case all the time.
Good.
So they're keeping a close eye on him. Um, he's doing a great job from what I've seen.
Is this, who is this? Is that?
Uh, it said people from South Dakota.
South Dakota, that's what I wondered. So I've got, he got his point across to you?
Yeah, he got his point across to him. They got the new bucket built for their long reach. And, uh, he's doing a really, really nice job. Taking a lot, a lot of fill out of that ditch.
Good.
Blowing dry. It wasn't any water. He was just scooping out there. Shows you how dry it is.
Wow.
Yeah. Uh, and also I checked on some weeds out here on Roosevelt where they put the box in. Uh, you know, there's all that fresh dirt and they grow up to a lot of weeds.
They grow good there.
And I told them guys, uh, Secretary Rose talked to Paul, I said, and they mow the shoulders, get out in there and mow everything they possibly can.
Is it kind of accessible mowing?
Yes, it is.
Why is it not like a big ravine?
No, it's, it's, it's mowable.
They're good. Yeah, sounds good.
Okay, and that's about all I had. Alrighty, we're after nine. We're ready for you now.
All right. I'm Conservation Officer Bill Sees. I'm here to address the damage to our wildlife area up in the Livermore area and some of the other wildlife areas here in the county. Um, specifically the potholes, Livermore area being by far the worst. Um, it is, I would say there's a third of that wildlife area there that has been turned into bare dirt by ATV use, um, and people in there riding. To access it, they come in through the Livermore access county park and then they're riding through our signage and, and going back in there and destroying it. Um, my concern obviously is there are threatened plant species back in there that they have annihilated. I mean, big patches of arrow arm that, uh, of course it's a little bit drier this year, so it's a great place. It's gonna, it stays wet, because it's low spots where what's required for it to grow up to, to live. They have turned that into a mud hole, a, uh, place to do donuts, et cetera, et cetera. Um, obviously, the, the less, uh, plant life that's there, the less wildlife that is there, which is our concern, is because we're already at limited, limited supply up here in Humboldt County as far as how much wildlife habitat that there is. So, um, we're kind of looking to come up with an agreement with the county to be able to block off that area and stop these ATVs from getting in there and causing more damage. The, the liability itself, not just to us, but to you guys, is, uh, letting, letting them operate on that county piece. Um, if they hit a tree, they, they, somebody ends up dead, it's, you're talking millions of dollars in lawsuits, uh, from, from people that get hurt in there. Um, that's where we're at. And I know, uh, I talked to, I talked to Dean Krueger a little bit about it. Um, he said that the ATV organs is four or five years old now? Is it not like that?
Probably, yeah.
Um, he said, you know, when, when this all came to be, he was in support of it. I know a lot of the supervisor were in support of it. The thing, and this is what I've run into in Webster County, is everybody wants to support it supervisor-wise and sheriff-wise, but nobody's pledged to do any additional enforcement. So we're putting a whole bunch more vehicles on the road, because they are, they're classified as vehicles in Iowa code, okay? But we don't have, you know, people out there enforcing another, it's with one, one guy or two guys per county that, that are doing it. Um, we're putting additional, uh, vehicles out there. In the last week, I've had a nine-year-old driving a four-wheeler down the highway. Um, I've had, I can't, I don't know how many non-registered machines here in Humboldt County. They're not following the rules. And for me, for realistically, for, for anyone to expect one person that's in charge of two counties to be able to handle all the additional ATV traffic, it's, it's, it's just, it's not possible, guys. Um, I don't know if we need to try to get, uh, I know Sheriff Stubbs was pretty receptive to getting some of his deputies into some ATV trainings and things, so they knew what to look for, because it is a little bit more complicated than just a, just a car. But, you know, no insurance is probably the biggest thing up here. I'm not seeing insurance on any of these registered machines hardly, very few. I'm not seeing, I've seen gobbles of them that aren't registered. I've, I'm having lots of, uh, uh, people that are, have open containers and driving around on ATVs drinking beer, um, and obviously the Livermore area. We do have a bunch of pictures of the Livermore area. Unfortunately, my computer crashed. I, I didn't know if you guys had a, had a computer that I was able to plug in a, a picture drive to. And do you have one of those right here?
It'll take me a little while to study that. Let me show it on the big TV.
If you guys want to see this, I mean, this is, this is what it's looking like up there.
Man, I've, I've got the equipment here.
I got a question. You say they access to the park? I've not been up there. I don't know.
Okay. Right there, right there at the, if you come east out of Livermore, and yep, and you go down the, down the hill towards the river, right there is a little county access.
Okay.
Um, it's, we border the county access. The state ground borders that county access.
Right.
And they're making access into the property through there and then through, um...
Kind of coming in the backside with them.
Yes, they're also coming in off of County K, where you guys blocked, I believe, I don't know if it was you guys or, or the city of Livermore that blocked off, so they couldn't ride down to where the, uh, Super Lagoons are, et cetera.
So, okay.
It's small.
That's what I wanted.
It gives secondary really kind of a...
Well, there was, you got, originally there was just a barricade that said, "Road closed." Um, then, then they put a fence up on one side, or a gate up on one side. Now, with this side is fenced, they have created a whole nother path on this one, this side, and are driving down through the ditch and then down into that private property and across into the state ground from both sides. Um, I have somewhere between twenty-five and thirty people that I'm trying to identify from, from trail camera pictures and from personal interaction in there. Um, and everyone will be charged if I can figure out who they, who everybody is. Working with, uh, some of Dean's officers to try to ID them. So, um, it's, but I mean, when you guys, I, I think, I, I guess I feel that if you guys take a look at this and see what's going on down in there, you're gonna see that it, it's a bad deal. I mean, it's...
So is it mostly, I mean, I'm trying to, is it mostly kids? Is it mostly young adults?
It appears to be young adults. I've, uh, some forty-year-olds, some fifty-year-old guys, gals down in there on, on the ATVs. Um, it's, it's just kinda everybody. I mean, it's, it's went from, it went from basically a few trails this spring to it's been turned into a...
Recreational area.
Yeah, yeah.
This is all on the, going to be quote-unfold state ground that'd be just west of the river.
Correct.
That the state purchased and it's... The sad thing is, as it says, and you mentioned it, it's all posted. And you already mentioned that they're gonna, you know, these are ATVs. Obviously, they're gonna drive around barricades and, you know...
To an extent, yes.
Well, it's gonna take phenomenal fencing and barricades to keep them out. And the area that the county owns, which would be to the north of that, when that bridge was redone, that is one nice area that people can drive their vehicle down and they fish there. They don't create any hardship for anybody, because they don't, you know, they're, they're... You know, so you hate to deny access to, to, you know, legal records.
Yeah, you hate to deny access to good people.
Yeah, these are people that they, they pull their, their car pickup down, they set their lawn chairs and their umbrella, and they're just fishing there, having a good time. They're not hurting anything. Uh, so really isn't fair, I mean, we can't block access. That's county. That's not on the DNR. And, you know, that's the sad thing. You post property, people disregard that. I just don't know, you know, and I agree with you a hundred percent, you know, tearing up the, you know, vegetation and the wildlife are all for the conservation part of it. Uh, I like your thought too of the law and enforcement part of it. I mean, they know, and maybe we can be a little proactive. A lot of them are younger, you know? They're not kid-kids, but they're, they're younger people. They get a little rambunctious. Sometimes just having a visit with those people, you know, yeah, it'd be nice to catch them and charge them. That puts the fear of God in them.
Right.
They should know that they're posted property. There's other places to ride and do that. And it's, it's a rough deal.
I'm, uh, Brian Hoyer. I'm the Wildlife Biologist for the area. And I guess I just wanted to get on the same page with everyone. I only have one map here, and I just wanted to make sure we were all speaking the, the same, uh, language here. This is the, uh, Victor Fisher property that was approached with that Coke Pipeline spill restitution money here. Um, you know, here's the, here's the access. The four tents that the county has right here, uh, are, are where folks are coming through and then getting on to us. And, you know, again, as Bill was saying, there's multiple trails in here and everything. And what we would wanted to do is just work with you folks, if you will. And I understand the access for folks. I, I get that. Um, uh, but, you know, if, if that can just be closed off, and we have a couple of ideas and thoughts. Now, people could still go back to those people who wanna go back and fish. Uh, you know, they're just not gonna be able to drive through this, through this four tents to do that, you know? But we feel that if we could put a barricade, uh, here, working with you folks, and then, uh, you have one over here on the other side, except, uh, you know, you've got the road closed off, you've got a gate on one side, and they've just went around the other side. It would be a, a pretty simple, uh, I guess I'll call it simple fix to keep that. Now, does that keep anyone from doing, you know, whatever they wanna do? No, but it's a, it's a start. Yeah, this would be on the west side, you know, and the, the folks have put up a nice system here. Well, they've just went around the other side, is what they've done. I think this could be easily fixed. Our thoughts or ideas were, is just using some big native field stone, you know? Something that they just can't easily move or bust down or something like that. And the same idea was, was, uh, the same thing here also. And again, I certainly, you know, we want folks to use the area. That's, that's not what we're trying to, to get away from either, just not ATV, uh, folks, if you will. So we're just basically talking a line of rocks, if you will, from here down to the river. Uh, and now if they wanna, and if we could shut this off over here from going around, now they've gotta make themselves highly visible, if you will. And not that they won't do that, but they, they can't just get back in here and do whatever they want, because this is the main access they're coming through here right now. Uh, you know? So we just wanna work with you folks, because, uh...
I got this map.
Yeah, you betcha.
The north, obviously, is this way.
You bet, yep. And this is the boundary of our property. This is the little access that comes to the river. River's right here.
And a big thing to keep in mind is the little four tents where, where our lawn vehicles to drive back in there. Is that really enough to worry about somebody going through there on an ATV and wrapping around that, a tree back in there? And then suing you guys, suing us for millions of dollars? I mean, ultimately, I've talked to John in length about it, the county attorney. He, he absolutely thinks it's a, it's a potential...
Yes, sir.
Hot spot for you guys. He thinks it's a hot spot for us. Honestly, we're just why we wanna get involved and get at least our, our...
Yeah, and we, we, they would still allow to, they would, excuse me, they would still be able to do that.
Couple hundred yards.
Park right there and fish right there. We wouldn't keep that from happening. The big thing is, is that two-track goes down that four-tent. And that's what we'd like to show up. People would still be able to use that just like they do now.
There's also places where the trail is just literally inches, or maybe even a foot from, you know, fifty to twenty foot drop. If you, if you get on the trail just a little bit, it doesn't show up very well, but that's literally the tire track. Just inches from falling into the river or into an oxbow. There are really some, I mean, central safety hazards there. I guess what I would add too is, as far as who may be using it, people from Wisconsin, Larry, and actually trailering in ATV with the person coming there. So I originally thought it was just... It's spreading. I thought it was just local people that were using it, potentially what I saw too, until Bill, I took some charge on it as far as keeping track of who's there. And it was just people trailering in some other areas to use it.
What do you think of Fort Dodge, Stone, the Jipson, where they can write to write?
Well, yeah, Fort Dodge is a great example. You know, we, we had engineers, you know, you know, we paid engineers a lot of money to go in there and design Fort Dodge. We, we still have a tally there, you know, already this year, where a gentleman drove off the trail, you know, lost control, went off, off the edge of a trail. We're talking about, like what he talks about, we're talking about guys that, you know, might be in there for the first time. They've got a couple of beers in them. They're ripping around and nobody, I, I, out of, out of fifty, sixty pictures that I do have, I've got two people ever wearing helmets. Ever. And they were both on, yeah, they were both on, uh, utility bikes that would be legal, both on the highway and off-road. Um, but, I mean, that's, this is what we're, we're looking at trying to stop somebody from losing their life in there. A young, a young person. I mean, it doesn't, it doesn't matter to me if they're young or old, but, you know, we, we don't, it, it always hits. But that, how far back is the county? If I, it's gonna be about, yeah, about a point, was it about four mile back?
This map shows it pretty well. I would say it may be me two hundred yards, three hundred yards.
Yeah, it's not...
Yeah. And I'd just say too, I mean, in our line of work, we use ATVs, we're trained in ATVs. And when we were back here looking at this, there were spots that I was uncomfortable even going on ourselves. I mean, it's, it's pretty tragic to be back in there.
We can put some of those native boulders across there. You know, still not, not denying access to the river here. We're talking a little bit of stretch here. They, they've got this so rudded up.
How many people do we, how many do we reach out? The whole thing. How many people down there, vehicles would fish anyway?
A lot, a lot. I've not been out there. I mean, every weekend there's people fishing. They're all through the week you see them fish.
I would hate to do that.
But I mean, but I mean, for being the conservation end of it, uh, the guy that's not checking, I don't ever, I've never checked a fisherman up above, up above the parking lot. We're always right here on the ox.
And they can still go back there and fish. They just need to walk. And it's a relatively short walk.
So you're, you're in favor of...
I would like to see vehicle access shown.
Yeah, it's a short walk, and there's a path there now, I mean, I think that's...
The other parts, uh, the other accesses, it's not all better, they, they get into them tearing stuff up and doing...
Um, this is by far, this is by far the worst that I'm aware of, honestly. And I think it's a situation where that, that track has been there for a while, I guess you probably talked to Eric. It's been there forever.
I don't think they're over there at night, Ryan.
No, honestly, everywhere else, I think we're in pretty good shape. I'm not saying occasionally somebody doesn't tear down a trail on a four-wheeler, yeah, they probably do, but nothing that...
I don't think anybody...
Well, kind of other people, you know, saying a lot.
Everything is...
Yes, yes.
All the accesses through the whole county, all the no-ATVs, I guess, there are all kinds and avoid... Where you can read them.
Yep, but I think they're...
We got some meat, we're a little...
Yeah, yeah.
I just catch them.
People are aware of the rules.
So, in order to do some type of enforcement, we have to go through John and write up some type of ordinance? Do we have to...
I don't think so, it's our property.
It's already posted, it's our property, so...
I think Mr., uh, can you remember? Uh, Mr. Gallagher, I think he's got an idea on, on how to help stop this, or at least make it a little bit easier to control access. Um, and there's a, there's a couple of those gentlemen that they work with quite regularly, they do have native, native boulders. We're not looking to, uh, you know, yeah, we're not looking at taking something natural and turning it into a, something non-natural. So, I mean, these are all gonna be, would be huge native stones that come in, um, they unload a load there in that parking lot, and they basically, off that, that, that area there, where, see, this is already cased off here, it's the prurges, and they were just looking at going along here and then doing some type of block off the other, other end, other end also, so...
We've done this in other places, added some paths, in one of those areas, but we had some issues there, and there are three, we may even go larger boulders here, just because we, we wanna make sure we get the problem solved. There's probably four-foot boulders that we'll bring in, and we'll place them, and they're pretty, even if you guys really wanna do something there, so there's other things we can do, that's kinda the first step. And again, it has worked, and as far as having to any ordinance, is that they, you know, if they, once they cross onto our property, it's already, that's somewhat illegal physically, that's gonna, I mean, that's where they're going, so...
I don't see a problem with walking off, you walk down there a few hundred yards, it's based on what? You don't wanna go there and go something like that?
We, we should appreciate, yeah.
It's fishing right there.
I think we're looking at someone getting hurt.
I, and I apologize again, my computer, literally, my hard drive went out of my computer sometime last night, otherwise I'd be able to pop things up.
Ryan's got a few photos there of kinda the, just the proximity of the trail to some of these drop-offs, and just the other things, it kinda looks straight to damage to some of the vegetation, so... I think the overlying issue is pretty much human safety.
It is, yeah.
I see no problem, let's just go ahead and get it done.
What would you like to do on the other end of that, if you do it, sort of, on that barricade end, would you wanna put another gate up, or do you wanna use rock there? How do you guys...
Well, we don't wanna put big rocks, rocks, or right away, if they hit the rock, then we get sued.
I'd rather just see if we couldn't stretch another gate out into the timber as far as you can, because they'll just keep going around it as far as they can keep going around.
Well, and that's, they're gonna come to the point there where that's that, that they would have to be, have access on front of property, and that's where I'll handle that.
Then you got the authority to stop them.
Well, not only that, I have authority to, to find the landlord that's allowing them access, which I don't think it's, I don't think that's gonna be an issue there, the gentleman doesn't want, he's tired of it too, so...
Um, I just made the suggestion, and I'd be happy to go look at this anytime that these gentlemen have it. It's, pictures are good, but, and I'm intimately familiar with this area, uh, and your concerns.
He doesn't have your picture on, and your four-wheeler, does he?
No, he doesn't, no, he does not. No, he does not. And I, we were just talking...
Yeah, I'd be happy to, I'd be happy to do that, that way you guys can put some eyes on it.
I will be anytime, and I mean, I've got time this week, and it's up to these folks. Because, yeah, it's, you're talking about it, you've got the general idea, I just, I would go look at it with them.
That'll give us a better opinion before we do make any decisions.
So, they do, do they do it in the winter time with snowmobiles back in there then, or...
This, this honestly, and these guys will tell you the same thing, this started out as just a, a little bit of an issue over the course, I'm, I've only been up here about a year. So, when I first got up here, there was a little bit of, you could tell that people been riding back in there. They have turned it since this spring from a couple little riding trails to, uh, I mean, it's, there's trails literally going every direction, down into the river, down into that creek, cutting all through the, I mean, I don't, I don't even, without, without showing it to you or having access to get this little guy...
Kinda just like the word got out, that, hey, there's this great place in Humboldt County, and, and this summer it's just really escalated.
Wisconsin, people, trailer machines bringing, bringing them down, I've got old guys bringing trailer machines from Flaring, I've got guys bringing trailer machines from all over right in Cassouth County, because they don't wanna drive down, because if they go, they'll, they'll have to be parked, that's what they have to do, they have to register their machine, they have to wear a helmet, they don't wanna do that. Um, uh, you know, every one of us was twenty-five years old, and I used to think I was ten-foot tall and bulletproof too, but I know that if my head competes against a tree going thirty miles an hour, I'm gonna lose. And there, like, like Rob mentioned, there are two spots for sure, that if, if they aren't quick, well, even if they're quick on the brakes, if, if just the inertia from that machine moving forward is going to carry them over the top of that, that, it's probably twenty-five foot drop, that machine's gonna top on land right on top.
But it'll be good to show area...
It would, absolutely.
I'll be happy to look at it anytime, if it was for you guys.
And, and I believe it was Brian that mentioned, you know, if these guys, if, if you guys wanted to come see it, he mentioned this prior to the meeting, that if anybody wanted to go down in there and look at it with us, we'd be more than happy to go back in there, so...
I'd, like I said, very familiar, I did not realize, so you guys showed up, that it was that big of a problem. I know it's probably a small problem, but...
Well, I mean, that's, that's part, there's, there's some, what, what finally, here we go.
You'll have to come around to the, it can connect to the TV, because...
That's okay, I wanna, there's, in particular, this is the type of things that are going on during the weekend, and that's partially why I wanted you to see it. So, this is one of the main trails right here.
This is probably the...
That's all right.
I apologize again, guys, and I, I'll take any, so I can explain some stuff, see it. So, this is one of the main trails right through the, through the bottom, where, where this was, you know, obviously, the trail is actually cut into the, into the bank, this is just a picture of the track. This is after one, one Saturday and Sunday night down there. Liquor, uh, obviously alcohol, and, and this is just in the back of a gentleman that actually called me and said, beer cans out on the river, all these are whiskey bottles and beer cans, the people that cleaned these up actually went out in the river and cleaned these up. Um, this was, this is where all that trash came from, around the campfire down there on the sand. All this stuff left...
Was that just local citizens that were just volunteering their time, because they were kinda tired of it?
Absolutely, yeah, it was just a couple that lives there in town, so, um, there's several pictures of the campfire, but I wanted everybody to get a good idea. But, I mean, you're talking whiskey bottles, liquor bottles all throughout here. This particular night, I had trail camera pictures of those guys driving ATVs up until about two o'clock in the morning, from about four o'clock in the afternoon till about two o'clock in the morning, so we can all imagine what their alcohol level did. This is, this is a side picture, and it gives you an idea of where they're cut through, but this is the main path again, you can see that it's cutting, they're two and a half feet. And this is, this is arrow arm, this is a threatened plant species in the state of Iowa, and this is flattened, because they've, it's a low, low water year, obviously, but this is, this is where they're coming out into this, because it's wet and muddy, and they're doing donuts, cutting all through that. This was actually in the flowering stage, and it had, their flower heads up, and...
And that's a damp area of plant?
Yes, very, very, yeah.
Oxbo, I've seen it.
A normal year, I would say that this would probably have water in it and be full of wood nuts, and we kinda talked about that down there, so... There's the whole kinda overview of where they're coming off the trail and what they've done to that lower water area. Stuff, there's where they're first coming, this is where they're doing a hill climb, they're cutting grubs and then trying to climb up the hill, and you see this is actually water right over here still. Again, I took a lot of pictures of that, just because it is a threatened plant, and this is where they first initially drive into it, if you can see what, obviously. This is just a trail through the, these are, these are trails down the river.
Yeah, so it isn't like they're just...
Where those trails are, is that all on state owned ground?
Well, other than the, where your first, I'll, I'll, I'll show you, this is, this is one area where, how this started out is one area where they were driving around, were driving through here, and it got wet and muddy, and they cut in, I mean, these ruts are literally mid-thigh to me, I mean, they come up to above your knee. The machines have started bottoming out, so just now the daredevils go through this and everybody else start driving around, well, what's happened now is they can't get into here, so this trail here, they decided to drive around here, because they can't get the machines through it without getting totally stuck.
Where do they park their vehicles from?
They're parking up in town, a lot of times at the bar, a lot of times on Main Street, at different individuals' houses there in town. This is one of the trails coming in, um, this is just trail all through here.
It's gonna be your job to cut them off.
I just appreciate being able to work with you guys and try to figure out something.
This was, this was, uh, last weekend down on the riverbank, somebody got in there and got stuck in a four-wheeler, and I was like, I have different cards there.
I wish you would've too.
I could've just been minute, I mean, I, I've literally, I couldn't have been more than an hour or two behind, because this was right away in the morning when I took the picture, so...
You have to keep later nights if it's up to...
Well, I, I, trust me.
I'm kidding, but, I know it's rough.
I've got over a hundred hours logged in this place this year, pretty easy, this just this summer.
Is it fine, Dan, and, and get their return?
Uh, yes, because we're assessing, I'm, I'm asking the judge to assess damages to have a buddy that I've caught in there, so... Um, this is, this is where, obviously, this would mean that they're, this is the furthest of the west property line in, in there, where it goes briefly onto private property, and then this, this will cut, this cuts across a little chunk of private property, and then it, actually, oops, sorry about that. This, uh, to give you an idea, this trail takes you out to where that road is blocked off. So, this is the very furthest west part.
So, that's on the west, uh, road from the Baldin.
Yep. And this is just more tracks, I mean, it's, then we're back to the beginning, so...
Yeah, that's unfortunate.
I think it's, I mean, it's, it, even for me, just seeing it progress this summer, and it's just gonna get worse.
Yeah, it's already bad enough if it didn't get worse.
I'm afraid if we don't maybe try to get on top of it right now, it's really gonna escalate into a pretty bad thing, you know, even for the city. They're down there hooting and hollering, drinking and carrying on like that.
And what, where, where, where Rob mentioned that drop is, it's actually about right where I'm standing, I wasn't on my game and didn't take a picture of it that day. There's, there's actually a, I don't know, it'd be about right here, it's, it's actually right here. There's a beaver that has started to come up out of the creek, so he's channelized the edge of the trail pretty good, so, and this is something with, you know, better seen in person, but this is literally from this, this trail edge right here, where that beaver's got, you can just see, start to see the black right there where he's coming out, he's got it cut out, so if somebody comes zipping down that trail and that hits that tire, they're literally gonna go over a twenty, twenty-five foot embankment down to that creek, so...
It's a wonder something hasn't happened.
It is, and thank God it hasn't, so...
Is the beaver, um, doing a little corn?
Oh, yeah, it's in the heck out of corn right there, it's just starting, so, I think he, this was kinda his sample run, to see if the ears were...
Yeah.
They don't like, they don't like to do it until it's about right.
You know what, they really like to do the corn, they like to build their dams.
Build their dams, yep.
Yeah, and really, it's a great building material.
It's like the raccoon, he gets sent out for the first week's corn.
I just wanna say thanks for letting us have a chat.
He's always a day ahead, he knows when it's perfect, the next one you go out and there's no corn left.
And he sampled thirty-five ears, every one of them.
Okay, so we'll get a time set up with Eric.
Call me anytime, this, this week is fine, it's up to you guys.
You have a tournament?
Yes, he does.
Okay.
Well, I'm good with whatever we gotta do to move forward, to block it off somehow.
I gotta ask the first person, uh...
I just, I just...
Brian Hoyer.
This doesn't surprise me.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Or that they were at that...
Hi, Phil, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your attention.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Phil, Phil, you are, uh, Rob, very underpaid, thank you, good presentation. I was...
Well, I'm really... Okay. It's been trying, or something.
I'm telling you, man, right in there.
I love to...
You guys are in good places, uh, if you got any other places in the county, if you got any other places in the county where we might be into it, uh, you guys, uh, you know, be looking for someplace else to keep an eye out.
Yep. So, so, so...
I don't, I don't, I don't, I don't misunderstand. I, I got...
I'm a brave, brave guy. Yeah, he's...
I'm a...
He'll do it, frankly, we need your help, whatever we can do to...
We'll be on it, any day.
All right, thank you.
Well, first off, I'd like to see a motion to explore closures on this, and come, come back to it after a visit, personal visit from Eric out there, or whoever wants to, I'll take a look at it.
I'd take that, look, Dave.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
We have a short recess, what, are we at a point, or do you need to do something else quick?
We're getting a motion going to drainage.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're moving into drainage, and we'll take a short recess while we're getting set up. Okay.
We're in drainage.
Go out of recess, and the drainage just goes. Okay, we're in drainage, and we have approved pay estimate number one to Cherokee and Suns for field, oh, that's something different. Okay, we've got an amount of thirteen thousand, one hundred and forty-five dollars and sixty-six cents.
Just a quick summary, this represents the footage on the part that was in the bid, there was also some footage downstream that we decided it'd be best to go at and dip it out. Um, we arrived at the price per linear foot by using their bid over the length of the original project, and that came out to a dollar and eighty-three cents a linear foot, so that's what we agreed to pay them for the downstream cleanout, the same price per linear foot.
So, that's basically from that Y down to the bridge?
Yes, correct, yep. And somebody else is repairing that blowout east of the bridge, Meyer?
Myers.
Yeah, yep, he's doing that, he moved some equipment over there. There's a blowout on the north side of the ditch, a little bit further downstream yet, you can't see it till you're right on it, so...
So, does this cover the area that they said, or they started, we didn't like, and they went back, we did it, because the way we liked it?
There was another, yes, and then there was...
Was it all in that?
Yep, yep.
So, what percentage of the thing is done from...
Um, probably, I'd say the overall length is, they got twenty-five, thirty percent done.
They've, they've got that first section done now.
They, they got that first section done now.
Yeah.
They're almost up to the bridge on Fri- Thursday or Friday, whatever day.
Yeah, yep, yep.
To me, it looks like they're doing a good job.
Oh, it's, it's so much better. We're checking them regularly for elevation and bottom width and they just, they're so.
You guys are out there a lot.
Yeah, to start with here, yeah, well, it's.
Well, the good thing is if there's not a lot of water in there, he's getting to where he wants.
No water.
Yeah.
That's good.
It's amazing.
Dirt.
Yeah, absolutely amazing. That'll make it a lot easier for them, actually, when there's a lot of water, it washes so much of the dirt out of your bucket right away.
You can see the clay bottom he's touching, he's, you know, he had his later set up and.
Our guy actually took him over to see, um, Peterson's digging. Well, no, he took him over B and B, the DD four, to see, watch them dig and how they went down with the far side, pulled it straight across and then tipped it instead of trying to round the far side. So, that helped a lot for them to see that. They, they're used to working on their own. A rounded bottom is fine if you're not worried about the capacity in that lower part because you, you narrow it up a little by rounding that bottom. It's probably actually better for less slough off, but it's not how it was designed, so it wouldn't have the capacity. There are two spots along there where there's enough seepage through the bank that a couple of the slopes have sloughed off, so we're gonna, we're gonna meet with their, uh, pipe guy and probably do fifty or a hundred feet of tile and outlet it into the ditch. So, we pick up the water before it seeps through the bank. So, that'll be coming yet.
And, uh, one thing, when I was out there, I asked him, he'd hooked a couple pipes. I said, were they, had the farmers marked any pipes? He says, no. He said, it'd be very helpful if the farmers didn't mark their pipes where they know they are, 'cause he can't find them all in the weeds.
Yeah, yeah.
And it's just costs more money when he hooks a pipe.
Yeah. And we've, we've sent a letter to the ones downstream, uh, to get some marking done. We've got one drawing back on, from Rasmussen that shows several pipes, so hopefully we get more back yet.
Yeah, it'd be great. So, we'll save money in the long run.
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely will. So, our recommendation is to make this payment where satisfied with how they've improved their work, um, for the total.
I'll make a motion to accept one, uh, thirteen, one forty-five, sixty-six in payment number one.
I'll second that.
First and second. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, discussion on field crossing. This is in the same district, right?
Uh, yes, mhm. Um, this is another field crossing. Uh, it's gonna be probably lumped together here a little bit. In, uh, DD three, there's a field crossing that belongs to John Opheim. Um, the pipe is slightly high. It's, it's not much, but it's slightly high. Um, there's a, hold on, I should read through what the attorneys say. Um, there's an, there's varying opinions on how to handle these field crossings if they're too high. Um, options you have are take it out, clean out the ditch, put it back as a district, or take it out as a district, make the landowner put it back, um, or just insist they do it all, which is hard to do. Um, so, four different drainage attorneys that I've talked to in, in recent weeks, I've asked them about this. Um, David Woolenzeen does all of Calhoun County, has been doing it forever. They have, the district removes it, the landowners put it back. Jim Hudson, who does several counties, district removes, landowners put it back. Eric Eady from, uh, Four Dodge. Yep. Uh, in Webster County, they, the district takes it out and puts it back. Um, Dave Johnson from, uh, Clarion, who's gonna be over here next week, um, says it's, that it's optional how you handle it. It just, yeah, I know, it depends. Um, well, and that's, it depends on the situation. If it was, if you're doing an improvement project, I can absolutely see the district taking it out and putting it back, 'cause you're deepening or, or whatever. But a repair, pretty gray area. Um, Dave's gonna be over here for a meeting with sub one and sub five. Um, I'd like to quiz him a little then.
My, my question is, it's not like it's damaged or wore out. It was put in too high to begin with. Who put it in the first time? They should be the ones who pay.
Previous landowner.
That's my opinion.
Previous landowner.
Yeah.
Have you talked to the.
They should.
Yeah. Where's he at with all this? Have you run these options by the landowners?
Yes, and, and I've added an option of, of selling the fourteen acres that he has to fight for to a neighbor, so he doesn't have to cross the ditch. Well, he has a good problem there. Capital gains would kill him, he says.
They take a big chunk of it.
Yeah, would take a big chunk of the payment, so.
So, when you, back to the beginning, when you said it's a little bit high, what's a little bit high?
Six inches, to six to nine inches, and it has back slope on it.
Well, he says, he says six to nine inches. That's from the bottom of the ditch to the top of the pipe, and the pipe is rounded, so you're actually losing more than six.
Yes, yeah.
You're losing probably two feet.
Yeah, oh, yeah, as far as capacity, I would say you're right.
And it's lost the wrong way.
Yeah. What I've looked at is the possibility of dropping in a smaller culvert beside it to take care of the low flows. Um, we're hesitant to remove it in the fact that it's not in great shape. It's bowed down in the middle, you know. Will they even be able to salvage it if they take the whole thing out? Don't know.
Well, Rick, what, what is the landowner's, what, what response have you got from the landowner?
His response was, uh, he understood that was a problem, that he did not put it in, but he obviously needs it for harvest. Do, please do not take it out before we get that, those fourteen or fifteen acres harvested. Would the board consider sharing the cost of putting a new one in or a, a smaller parallel? I said, it's gonna be a topic of discussion because we have another one with the same.
Downstream also.
Yeah.
It's the same ditch.
And there's one in, in DD four, so, yeah.
What would the rough guess amount?
Remove and replace the same one was almost twenty thousand dollars. It was over thirty for a new one. We got quotes from Cherokee. Um, so, we're talking big, big money. Um.
What's the diameter of the current pipe?
Says ninety inch, but I don't, I'm not sure it comes that way.
It's, it's, it's a big one.
It's a big.
Oh, it's big?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's large, yeah.
And it's pretty long.
Yeah, it is. It is. It's almost eighty feet long.
Eighty feet. That's a deep ditch there.
Yeah, yeah.
Is that district expense or county expense?
District, if the, if the district, yeah, if the landowner's not paying, it's district expense, yeah, 'cause it's in the, in a field, not out a road, so.
We have, I found, well, you got one opinion from a drainage attorney, that, the, the three previous, the district pays for the removal, 'cause obviously if you removed it, if it was gone, it wouldn't be a problem.
Right.
Removal, but then the landowners put it back if they needed to cross it. Could we see this as, okay, the removal part, they have to really itemize their work there. Removal part, uh, district, and the reinstallation potentially because the correct pipe, I'm just, a couple of ways of looking at it. Possibly the, the district paid for the pipe itself, but the landowner's paying for reinstalling that pipe. And/or.
Vice versa.
Vice versa. Or, Rick mentioned, a cost share.
I could, I could go that. We, we put it in, he pays for the pipe or something like that.
Yeah.
Something to that degree because.
Carries them all that way.
If he needs to maintain the crossing and that's sort of option C for the landowner was not selling the land.
Right.
So, if he does need an access, and it is a type of a cost share, but what do you want?
Does it have to be that Y?
Yeah.
Why does it have eighty feet?
Because the deep ditch is so.
Because it has to go off to the top.
Yeah.
Both sides, it's, it's.
And the ends in the ditch, you, yes, limit how steep you can make those, so as you get deeper and deeper and deeper, it gets longer and longer and longer.
At least probably a thirty foot top on there.
Yeah, yeah, the way.
So, I mean, something would is, is the type of a cost share, but, uh, you know, you look at, did the district pay for the pipe, or does the landowner pay for the pipe and the district pays for insulation or something to make it possibly easier to keep track of? Because.
Well, the one thing about the district putting the installation, we have some oversight, how it goes in, in depth and all that.
Or, yeah.
The fact that. You're getting older, you sure don't wanna do it wrong.
Right.
Or you could look at the landowner paying for the pipe because he's the one that needs it.
That's right.
But, like you said, the oversight of correctly, correct installation, you sure don't want it ending up back there, was that going the wrong way?
We know right where the bottom's supposed to be now because of the cleanout project.
And so, it's oversight, the, so basically, he's gonna pay for the, a new pipe, because that's what's questionable.
You got a question?
Trish has a comment.
If you keep it consistent with the, um, paying for the pipe that goes into the outlet, into the ditch, that's what we've done before.
Who pays for the pipe that goes into the ditch?
The.
Kind of, the district.
And then.
To sit, help save the ditch.
Is paid for by the landowner.
Is that how it's done, the other way? Well, maybe we should do it.
I mean, it's still done to the work order through the county.
You gotta be consistent with the other.
What's in there?
County pays for the exit pipe into the ditch. Landowner pays for the installation of it.
Still have the same oversight.
So, that is a good point. It'd be similar. It's a crossing, but.
Mhm.
So, we'd be paying for the pipe, the new pipe that makes it right. You're still there to make sure it's installed.
Yes, yes.
And the landowner pays to reinstall.
Fine.
Fair?
Sounds like a reasonable approach.
Plus, it's got continuity with.
That's what we're doing.
The outlet.
Yes, yes. And another good thing is, like, Secretary Rhodes orders pipe all the time. They have a supplier we could work through probably and get a decent price on it.
Price spot, probably.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Then I'll set it going.
Well, do, do you wanna run that by him?
Yeah.
And see if that.
Yeah.
Run that by him, come back to us with it, see what, see what we come up with.
Okay.
Well, how do we, you wanna just put it on for the next week, or you, do you wanna, if it works, I mean, that probably isn't something that's in stock.
No.
No.
But by the same token, this isn't something you're gonna do till after harvest, yeah.
No, I know, but.
Got the, yep, but don't let anybody speak, right?
Fourteen acres, you can do that in ten minutes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Are you paying wrong to turn around three times?
Yeah.
Yeah, harvests, it'd take long.
If you have, you know, at least find out where it's at. It's something big enough. I don't think they make nineties out here if it was coming from.
Well, it's a tin, it's a steel one.
Oh, it's tin?
Steel, yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, that's better yet. So, then, I'd at least.
Eighteen, eighteen foot, twenty foot?
Oh, the diameter's only like, uh, eight feet.
What are they, what are they?
From a bunch of.
What, what, what?
Oh, I know.
I wanna know what lengths those come in.
Probably twenties.
Twenty?
You can have them fabricated about any length, uh, but typical, the stock length is twenty feet.
Okay. But do they stock such a big one or not?
Yeah. And if you get it, there's a certain break there. I don't know if it's eight feet or a little bigger where they can't haul them, so they, they assemble them on the job.
They just bolt them together.
Yeah.
Drain bin.
Yeah. So, I think this one's just smaller than that.
That's pretty reasonable moving forward, though, and if you can follow up with that.
Yes, absolutely.
And that is also continuity to the exit pipe piping.
Thanks for sharing that.
Thank you, Trish. We don't wanna make your job difficult. Well, and that, those may can follow up.
So, do you wanna go into each of them?
You can.
Do you want to put it a ditch crossing procedure?
Yeah.
Whatever.
Okay, yeah, you can talk.
Rick will.
Well, hopefully Rick will come up with a, if they're agreeing to do it, then we can at least start chasing it down to see where and how long it takes to get it back here so that we can.
Yes.
So, yeah.
Okay, now we got DD number four, discussion on field crossing.
Yes. This is, this is the information on this field crossing. This is a Rasmussen property. You guys, somebody here, maybe Rick brought it to our attention, that there's a problem with erosion in the corner. This is downstream from where the contract is being done for the cleanout. Um.
The one Rick got for in Bruneering, right?
Yes, yes. So, we're, we're looking at repairing outlets downstream from where we're at, and this one came up. Um, it's.
Oh.
Yeah, yeah, it's bad. Um, another situation where they wanna leave it till its harvest is done, then let's work out what has to be done. Um, I mentioned to Rasmussen that our guys measured this and it was fifty-four inch on part of it. He couldn't believe that.
That's way too small, isn't it?
Oh, way too small, yeah, way too small. And it's no wonder that it's eroding downstream 'cause the water just shooting through this thing.
They're like a fire hydrant.
There's no silt in the bottom of it.
No, no, there isn't. Um, and we don't know what came first here because there's, part of it's a larger pipe, which is in terrible shape, all the wires showing in it. Um, and then there's fifty-four inch at the far end and with the second, well, the first picture and the second picture show.
So, they widened that at some point?
Well, yeah, yeah. We don't know which part they widened, whether it was the fifty-four inch or the other. I'm guessing the fifty-four came later. I'm guessing they just slipped it inside and laid three pieces or whatever.
So, the flow goes towards the end where all out of wax?
It, it, no, the flow goes towards where the wire's all showing, yeah. I was guessing that way too to start with.
What's approximate length all the way across from one end to the other?
Oh, let's see, one, two, three.
Can I tell the?
Eight pieces, eight, either sixty-four feet, little loss where they stuffed the one inside for sixty feet or a little over. So, um, again, the situation as far as, uh, did, he, he couldn't believe it was that small, but it is, and it is undersized. And what I did is I did a quick look at what size it should be, and if it's, even a one inch coefficient requires an eighty-four inch pipe. And we try and get close to a two inch on these ditches. That's a hundred and fourteen inch pipe. So, it's way, way, way undersized. So, this is affecting drainage on four, almost the entire length.
I mean, how did something like this get put in?
They just need a crossing, so they put it in. It lasts several years. You guys have been good, Secretary Rhodes has been good about, if they're putting a pipe in, they have us look at it, determine the flow line, determine the size. Um, but way back it was just, I need to get a cross here. This should be big enough.
And I got some pipe around, I can get it cheap.
Yeah, yeah.
Is this underground or?
Top of the field.
Out in the field.
Yeah, where it makes a swing from north south of.
At least you're not tearing a road up.
It, it, true, very true, yes. It's just a field crossing. And the same philosophy would work here if.
Same field, ran back to us, see what we come up with.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, have you talked, you talked to the landowner on this?
I did, I did. Um, it's again a kind of a, if we have to do something, it can have to be at least a cost share kind of thing.
Well, we've kinda discussed that, so I'd say keep it the same.
Yeah, yep. So, and again, it's the crop thing, make sure he gets the crop out. And I thought maybe he could get into that north part down the road, but the ditch stays north of that gravel road, so his, his access to the north side of the ditch is, is cut off. So, he, he, he needs it, just a matter of getting it sized properly. So, some, some significant issues there. Um.
I'd need a motion on that, just, or not. We'll just give you direction on that. Bring it to us next week?
Yeah, yeah.
Put it on there, then.
Yes.
The same.
Yes.
Program.
Okay. Okay, now, a little after ten, we're gonna go to DD eleven, sub five petition.
Okay, I talked to, um, Dave Johnson about this situation with the petition submitted to look at that alternate outlet. Um, and there was a question as far as annexing from one sub to another sub, and he said, absolutely no problem doing that, you just have to follow proper procedure.
Yeah, it's actually kind of Hudson's procedure thoughts, too, isn't it?
Yes, 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 that's very true. Um, yeah. Um, so, it's a matter of, do you authorize so we go ahead and do that report and it's, it's essentially done? I mean, in hours' time, I could probably have it done at this point, um, 'cause we looked at the sizes, 'cause I did a rough estimate way back. So, uh, it's just the formal action of authorizing did a rough estimate way back. So, it's just the formal action of authorizing the preparation of that report. And that's what the petition asked for, didn't it basically say, Carmen?
Yeah.
So, that's the way they're planning on proceeding? There isn't the private?
Well, I, yeah, is the private thought kind of gone away? Yeah, because it didn't need any requirements.
Now, what Dave suggested, and Trish and I have talked about it, is an informal meeting with the landowners of sub one and sub five and get all the facts on the table. We will, that's, we're talking about next week. There's no length of time required for notice because this is just an informational meeting.
Just informal gathering of...
Yeah, everybody's heads together.
We have that. Haven't done it twenty-third of October, don't we?
That's a formal, yeah.
So, you're talking the eighteenth as an informal?
Informal, yep. Just let's get all the facts out, get input from everybody, have the, I can have that report here. Yeah, it just, somehow we need to figure out a direction to go with this. How do we move forward?
All right. I, I've had some conversation with different people, and the question I have is if we sometimes should get a second opinion on this from another engineering firm?
You have one from Atler that's...
That's not an opinion.
That's not it.
Oh, you mean of...
That's research.
This, for this petition.
Oh.
I don't want to step on your toes, Rick.
Yeah.
But I think we'd like to give this petition to someone else, so we're comparing two different things, and we have two different engineers' opinions.
Okay.
I mean...
For what, for the project?
For this, yes.
Like to do a report on the project?
I know you've done a lot of work on it already.
But, yeah, no, that's fine. I think Atler's been involved with Mansky already, so...
And it may not be his firm, but it's just, we're hoping to bring maybe some clarity to this, because you made mention that you do need to get, and that's kind of the informal meeting. It, it's really the, not to, no pun intended, but the waters are really muddy on this whole potential project. And so, really, I think what Rick speaks to is, you know, more clarification, maybe a different set of eyes on it. Same theory moving forward to look at it, and, you know, it is possibly some different opinions or different options.
Will it give you the opportunity to look in both directions?
It is, still doing that, but it's also, if you have, you know, another engineering firm take a look at just this petition, then it is looked at a little bit differently, like Rick said, and I agree, nothing against Rick and his company. You're still, you know, we're at the original one, you've done a lot of work, but it's just, this whole thing is just such a, kind of a, more convoluted than anyone would like it. So, the clarity, is that fair to say that maybe, you know, different set of people looking at it, and they may well have, you know, a different take on this whole project. You know, this whole thing is, you know, this is an option.
But the simple fact that it, no one's changed, we aren't jumping ship on him.
No, no, because Rick...
Just getting an idea as to whether or not it's more...
It's kind of like if you're buying a car.
Yeah.
You know, I don't want the Chevy dealer selling me the Ford, put it that way. I don't know.
Okay, I'm the petitioner. I guess I was here when Gary Peterson's petition was submitted asking for time and the ability to look at options. I guess, I don't know quite what's going on.
Well, we're still, no, it's still the same. It's, we're looking at this petition.
Well, when I was trying to get someone to look at the other option that was initially suggested, there was no discussion of maybe we need a different engineering firm or anything like that. Why is this being treated differently?
Well, that's a very simple solution. We're, we're doing it in the right district last time, now you're jumping districts, which was set up...
It's in the same district.
No, it's not. We were set up eighty years ago. We were set up eighty years ago, and our trust was put into supervisors to maintain this.
Okay.
And it's never been that way. Now, all of a sudden, you're told a week ago, the other way.
My question is to the trade district members, I guess, why is this being treated differently?
Mainly, we, Rick has a lot of work on the table. And I think when you have two different separate projects, you can be kind of focused in one area, you know, you don't...
I don't hear Rick asking for help.
No, he isn't. But...
This is the same, we have the petition, you know, in front of us to accept the petition, which we're not denying, I just mean to talk about it, but it is to hopefully bring, you know, it's still going to be looked at, that's what the petition is all about. If, you know, Rick said the legality of it, it is legal, that was our question. But, you know, do we have someone else move forward with, you know, with the petition?
Would there be any cost to it, would duplicate the services? Got to cost more, duplicate the services?
Well, we wouldn't want to be duplicating them because they moved forward with this particular petition. And that's how, you know, that's what we always take a look at is...
There's no additional cost with two engineers?
Well, Rick has done up to this point, you know, what he's done.
From, from just generosity, basically, right?
Yeah, yeah.
We have not hired him to do a, a project on this yet.
He's done the original project.
Which we do appreciate.
Yep, that's the original project.
Honestly, I'll just put out your clarity of, and this is my opinion, if one project is more expensive than the other, there's a better commission for the engineer. So, the cheaper project costs less, engineering costs, that's basically right.
Depends on the length, I mean, we, we don't, yeah.
You know what I'm saying? I think you get a, when you win the comparison shop, you get a little better deal sometimes.
Okay.
That's, that's my opinion, and you get a different person's perspective on, on things.
That, that's the part that I don't have any problem with. I mean, you will spend some extra money. It shouldn't be a lot, because I look for them to come to us for...
Be a lobby of information?
Yeah.
They'll ask you for your, for your numbers, and they'll go to them, and, you know, so...
These are two separate petitions. The original petition was the original project. You petition for a separate project. That's what the petition is, that's what's going to be looked at.
Well, the other side of the coin was, this was also going to be part of either a private at one time versus the way it's proceeding now.
Private, turning it over to the county, and then we went to the point of being county, county.
For our job, when we, we look at all the, all of it, and we're trying to figure out what's the best way for the entire project to be done.
I kind of want another opinion.
We're not upset with Rick.
No.
By any means, I think we're...
Rick's been doing us a good job.
I think what we're after is, is we want to make sure that this is the best way that this project's going to move forward. And if it's with him, then it's with him. But if it's with the other, right?
Right.
That, that's the way I understand it.
And my, my only hangup with this is the, the time delay. I, I don't know how fast they could get to it.
Put it together.
Yeah, put it together. It, it shouldn't take a lot, I mean, because they won't have to fool with history or any of that. But it's, we, you probably won't have an informal meeting next week, I would guess.
Probably not.
Yeah, so. And I can get ahold of, of Dave Johnson over there, because they, he penciled it in, I guess, is what I'd say.
Well, has anybody talked with anybody, or you, I mean, this is a, you're throwing this in a new direction.
Well, Eric brought it up to me.
Well, it's actually the same direction. It's, you know, we, there again, we look at the petition, accept the petition, and it says right there, authorize an engineer report. It'd be just a different engineering company.
Well, my question is this, Eric, if we call Joe Smith and say, what's your timetable look like? We're snowed under. Um, first thing we could do would be in November. That isn't going to work for us, right?
But, you know, this whole thing, we're trying to do this the best as possible for everyone involved.
I understand.
I guess if that was the case, you know, we may have to say, well, we don't have a viable option because of time.
That's what I want to hear.
Because of the time.
So, we aren't...
We certainly have enough time to find that out.
I, I agree.
Because that would be, you know, this week. And then Rick understands all this work.
Got a question, Dave?
Yeah, I got, I got a couple of things here. The first thing is, the first petition that was put out there is in the correct district, sub five of eleven. I don't understand how you can just jump out and go to a different district. I mean, it's never been that way. If you do jump out and go the other way, there's all this water coming up this ditch already, and the other ditch is going to be empty, you're going to pay two drainage assessments from now until eternity. But that's not right either. I mean, you can't just go out there and say, we're going to pay two of them every time. We're going across people's land that have nothing to do with this, and they're, you're really messing with them, and all it's doing is moving the cost to them. That's not right either. And do we have a say over there in that sub one of our water going, taking more water? That should come to a vote. I mean, that's common sense. You can't just say, we're going to dump this water on you, and you're going to like it.
What usually happens with boards is, the petition is presented for annexation, and then the board, as trustees, hires an engineer to evaluate the effects of that annexation on the district or...
You don't need to evaluate. You can't do it.
Well, drainage attorneys say you can, but, yeah.
Well, who's paying them?
I, I'm not sure how that will work because it's, what the one said to me the other day was, well, sub one is doing the annexation technically because you're annexing it into sub one. So, that's, some of these are legal questions.
But if sub one doesn't want it, how could they, it ain't going to happen.
Well...
Right? Because they have to accept the annexation, unless the supervisors overrule them.
It, it ends up a board ruling based on information.
Cost benefit.
Yeah, and, and, yeah.
And that's really getting back to all this, and that's what we're looking for. It is doable, that's what the petition was, because the petition basically took, for all intents and explanations, the private project and turned it into looking at it as a drainage specific project. It does go across, you know, and I understand everyone's concern there. It's to get the hard and fast figures to be looked at.
If you look at taking that water over to one, it's bound to be cheaper because you're not draining as many acres. You're going to lose three hundred acres of this at least. So, there's going to be a huge cost effect there.
Someday you'll have to replace that.
And you're going to replace it, and that's where we're at. That's what I've been saying all the time. Somebody else is going to come in and petition this again sometime in the future, and then we're going to get stuck again.
Yeah.
Plus, we're going to pay double assessments forever. It, there's a reason this stuff was set up the way it was eighty or a hundred years ago. It was set up to work, and it's worked forever. Now, if somebody just says, we can't do this, or we're going to do this, I, I just, this is just all out of control, fellas.
Both options do significant improvement to sub five.
You got to compare the cost per acre.
Yes. Yep. So, but, yeah, it's a big question. I mean, this is, this involves just about everything when it comes to drainage.
It certainly is involving a lot. Well, I mean, I like Rick's comment, but you realize you're not, but the cost benefit ratio, you know, you can look at it, the original plan, you can, you know, look just at that, but, you know, appreciate Dave's comments, that that is, that district, that is the original plan. But, you know, we have another petition in front of us that's an alternate route petition to look at. And, you know, he wants the facts to go through that, report the facts and figures.
Well, why don't we look for a motion, whether to accept or deny the petition first off, and then move on from there? I think we have to accept the petition, so I'm moving, we accept the petition for PD eleven sub five first.
All right, I'll make the second, so we can at least discuss it and see where you want to go with it.
We got a second from Bruce, any more discussion on it? Mike, you have a question or answer, or comment, I mean?
Yeah, I think if the flow study or something like a flow study was done first, whether that ditch would handle it, eight hundred fifty acres coming in direct, if it won't handle it, it'll stop right away, right?
You know you're going to have to replace pipe under the road.
Yeah, we got the cost of replacing pipe under the road. If the ditch will handle the flow, if the ditch won't handle the flow, then there's no point in going any further, because it will stop it before it starts. See what I'm saying? If you put a one-inch coefficient project in an eight hundred fifty acres, dump it in that ditch, you're going to add how much water to it, how much is it, is it going to handle it? Is it, is it capable of handling that? If it's not capable, what are you going to do?
That would be part of the investigation.
Yeah, and that has been looked at. I don't know who paid that bill, but...
Doing the whole project, I mean, telling everybody what they're going to be assessed, this and that, that wouldn't make any difference.
Report the engineering report. You say that has already been looked at?
Yeah, I've seen a report from Atler. I don't know if Mansky hired him or...
And what was that report, that it was in, in that way?
No, that, that...
Mansky paid for that, and it's not right.
Well, I, I haven't studied it enough to know whether it's right or not, but...
Well, the...
Well, wasn't that done when it was still being partly at part looked at as private?
Yeah.
So...
Right. That's where this, this clarity thing I keep bringing up, is to get some scientific...
And that, and that would be part of this new engineering report.
Yeah.
Any more discussion on this topic? All in favor of accepting the petition?
All right.
Motion carries.
I got one more question.
Yep.
The original one should be voted on first though, correct?
Oh, when it comes down to...
No matter what happens.
Correct. Yes, because that was the first, first one that was voted on.
When you're talking from Gary?
Yes, the original petition. Yeah, Rick has put together, we have that.
So, when we got the votes to pass that, then we're, this other one's just out the window, is that correct?
Oh, boy.
Well, if you've got about every drainage thing going here possible?
Yeah.
Now, if this goes through, this other, you know, and this is looked at, and you get a report back, does that mean you have two options?
I think you have two options.
Options, I think. Technically, it comes down to us, we can make the decision. Yeah, this is one of those difficult ones. It's, it's, yeah, it's not a good one.
No.
That we like to make, but...
But this, the first one, which is, I say scientifically engineered, it's a report, you've done fine job on all that. This is another petition, yes, it affects that same project, but it's another option.
Well, definitely one of them has to be better than the other.
Well, we want the, just like the first one.
Better is the right word, cheaper might be the right word.
Well, that, wouldn't that be classified as better if it was cheaper for me?
Well, it depends upon who you ask.
I want to make sure it's cheaper, in my opinion.
Well, it depends upon who you ask, yeah.
I guarantee there are many farmers out there that are going to say, well, let's go with the higher price.
Well, I guess my point being, Bruce, it might be way cheaper for one and way more expensive for another, so that's what it depends upon.
A few years replacing another one that could have been replaced at now. So, I don't know, it's...
It's not, there again, muddied waters, but looking for clarification. It is legal to move forward with this, we want to get that.
So, in answering Dave's question, is it Gary, Gary's petition, that's the one we're going to?
That's there.
I, I believe you have to take both of these through the hearing stage and then make a decision.
Which one's like what Rick mentioned?
I, I believe that's drainage law.
Okay.
So, I will make sure that Dave Johnson isn't coming Monday just because he was planning to come over for an informal meeting. Now, that's not a problem. I need to talk to him anyway.
Yeah, I think we better postpone that.
Then you can figure out what the timing's going to be.
Well, and Bruce's point is very precise in particular, that no, no one wants to drag this on, it's, it's convoluted enough, we don't want to add time to it. We'll know that by this week, if, you know, where we move forward and which engineering company.
Do you have an alternate engineering firm in mind?
Yes. Well, we need to check on that. There's no sense in throwing that out until, you know...
How are we going to check on that if we don't throw it out?
You're going to do it behind the scenes?
No, we're, we're going to... We need to.
We're going to prove, ask him now.
Okay, okay. Okay.
Here, I got to change that a little bit.
If all this water's getting muddled, and we have a problem with the old pipe, we got to go in and fix that into the new, how's all this going to get handled? I mean, this all needs to be absolutely spelled out in writing perfectly before we proceed with this thing. Because the old pipe is old. Look, the repair we had on it this spring.
Yeah. Okay, now we need authorized engineer to prepare a report, if can be done in adequate time. Add that to the...
Yes, authorized engineer to prepare a report if we do not run it to a time crunch, adequate time.
Do you want to authorize one?
Can I authorize one right now?
Yep.
McClure Engineering. And there again, based on their workload.
Yeah.
We cannot, having not formally asked them, we cannot, you know, have this drug into next year. And that's, that's the stipulation, adequate time.
So, is this asking, is that from Gary's petition, or is that from Carmen's petition?
Carmen's. Because Gary's is done, Rick, this is a done deal. It's two separate petitions. The first petition is essentially done, all the information, Rick has done that. This is moving forward with this petition in progress.
One chief provided for.
Yes.
Did they tell us no, where do we go from there? Back to next meeting? I don't think they'll tell us no.
But to everyone's point, the adequate time, that's why we put, we can't, we can't drag this on.
This is pressing, I mean, like, we were wanting to start at October first.
No, but, but your point is extremely, well, if it's, well, we can't even look at this till two thousand eighteen, that's, that's an issue, that's an issue where everyone, then we have to reconsider. That's where the adequate time part of the motion comes in.
How do you make, was that a motion then?
Yeah, well, that was a motion.
In due time, adequate time.
Coach McClure, if they have time to take this project on, we will give it to them. Coach McClure, if they have time to take this project on, we will give it to them.
What timeline is okay? What, what timeline? They got it ready for October twenty third.
Their minimum, if not sooner.
Roughly six weeks. I mean, today's the eleventh.
Rick, do you have a issue with any other, any asking for information?
No, no, no. I mean, if it's, if it's something we did and weren't getting paid for, maybe, I mean, but any, any services that have been paid for by a district, absolutely no problem giving out.
Any hard and fast information done from a previous report, uh, a previous engineering study?
Right.
You don't.
Well, like DD thirty-three, we gave them our, our topography, um, ahead of time, didn't have a problem with that, because we were paid to do that.
Right, so if it's something that you've already completed, then it's, so they can have an exp, we don't wanna put the card for.
We should know, I mean, if, if that phone call was made today, it's six weeks from today.
Yeah, bare minimum, and.
That's when it's on, is the twenty-third, wasn't it? So six weeks from today, said you have that available, yea or nay?
You said that was October twenty-third by your research?
Yeah.
That's what went on the calendar for the twenty-third.
And I would mention, you know, if not sooner, which gets back to an informal, you know, it'd be informal hearing. Or just, it's an informational meeting, if nothing else.
That's for next week?
Well, that would be a tight timeline for anybody, but, uh, if, we may have it next week, no.
We have the same date, you had to.
Because they still have to prepare the report submitted, accept it, and set engineering report hearing forty days out.
Yeah, this wouldn't be a formal hearing on the new report.
Right.
It'd just be informal for that, you'd have a formal hearing for it later, like Trish says, forty days after it's been submitted and accepted.
You're talking about twenty-third?
Not for the, for the, on the twenty-third, it would just be an informal hearing on the new report. That'd be, that'd be the formal hearing for the first report.
How could you have a formal hearing on the first report and an informal on the second?
I, you need to continue the, the first one.
Yeah, the first one.
Yeah.
Yeah, they have to be continued again.
Yeah.
Do what now? Continue the first one?
Do it ahead of time, rather than wait until that.
Well, as time goes, everyone, if you have a legitimate complete report in front of you right now, they wouldn't coincide anyway.
Right.
Those dates don't coincide anyway, because of the legalities.
Sure, we're looking forty days after what date?
After the twenty-third.
After twenty-third.
And if you do it now, I mean, we hired it, the, whatever, before. If they submit a report next week, you set it for forty days after. That's sooner than if you have.
Forty days from the twenty-third.
Forty days from the twenty-third.
I would like to thank Trish's second comment, something to that effect, but we gotta get this all once in a time.
You do have a reclassification hearing on sub five of eleven, or, yeah, on the twenty-third. That's to get the open ditch separated from the tile, so that when you do evaluate remonstrance on that first project, just the people on the tile are voting or whatever.
We'll leave that on agenda.
I think so.
Well, then if we do the reclass, and they're done.
Okay. Back to where we were, um, we had a motion to Coach McClure, and we haven't voted on it yet, I don't recall, we even got a second on it.
I don't think you have the second.
We didn't have a first or second.
Okay. I make a motion, as stated, with McClure Engineering, due time, bare minimum, the report would be in our hands by October twenty-third, if not sooner. Agreeable to that?
Question?
You're still pushing it back that way, though?
Well, that would be bare minimum, and I appreciate what you said, hopefully it's sooner, but you said, the question was brought up, what would be the absolute amount of time to give them? That would be the, the ultimate longest amount of time, that they have that question.
So the twenty-third is their due date.
If they can't do it by then, then we have to do something different.
You're gonna do something different anyway.
We have to do something different. That's just true, we can't go any longer than that. That's our, you know, timeline. Obviously, with the much sooner than that.
Well, I'll second the motion, then if it's gonna be the twenty-third, the cutoff date, if it's the week after, then.
No, that speaks to you early or late.
Yeah, as soon as they lose. When to December, anyway.
Well, it's a hard and fast date, and ob, obviously, the whole business way sooner than that.
And I don't think that Rick should have to sit on the fence with, with their, I mean, they've already got their work pretty much done, right?
Mm-hmm.
So I guess that's my opinion, I'll second it on the assumption that the twenty-third is the cutoff date.
Okay, no first and a second, any more discussion on this confusing topic?
Yeah.
All in favor?
All right.
Motion carries. Okay, drainage updates. Okay, I'll just take a little bit and, uh, came by DD one twenty-five as I came down today.
The pond?
The pond, uh, the, the dam is done, they've shaped the emergency waterway, they got the overflow pipes in, uh, they got the engineering fabric there to put under the riprap. I'm not sure which contractor's placing the riprap, but we, that's about all that's needed on that large structure, so, um, the small pond just across the road, uh, from the project, that's done. It's, yeah, yeah, and that's what's gonna catch a lot of the silt and debris, uh, from the field. And, and Mark Dickey was leaving as I got there, we talked for a little while, and he would, had wondered how, how it would work to get that cleaned out when it needed it, and I said, "It's a district facility," I said, "a petition for clean out is all it would take."
So can I ask you a question there, Rick? Will they measure so that we know eight years down the road, there's foot and a half of silt in there, so we know what the measurements are, or how do they, is that just a guesstimate? Because there'll be water in it.
The, the large one should hardly ever get any silt in it. The small one, uh, we should be able to probably probe that anytime the water's down at all. Right now, for example, it's trickling through, the outlet for that is rock filter, basically, so, uh, it's trickling through there, and none of it's even getting to the big structure. I believe we'll be able to get in there or get a piece of equipment, so we can get somebody out there to actually probe, uh, and see how much silt there is, yeah. We should be able to, it's narrow, we could do it from the rocks, we can do it with a, for an end loader or something, just to get somebody so they can probe it, so.
Well, I just wondered if, that they knew what the original starting of the depth was, so that.
There'll be records of that. Yeah, good point, yeah, and.
And somewhere.
I think what we should do is just cross-section that before that water gets very deep.
Right, that's what I wondered.
Yeah, well, I'll just make a note to do that when we're down here. Yep. Yeah, when we have somebody down here with GPS, and I'm sure it'll be in the next few days.
Somebody on the canoe out in there.
Yeah, 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 it's not a very big area, but, yeah, you don't wanna be doing it while there's water rushing. I'll do, do as built of silt basin.
If you haven't grown out by there, it's pretty.
The pond?
Yeah, it's pretty neat looking.
Yeah, and it's gonna be very nice, I think. Handle some things environmentally and look good.
That'd be good for the environment.
Which, I mean, you know that grate? Still isn't pulled back, all it's got is a pe, all it has is a piece of hog panel, someone threw a piece of hog panel over it, I don't know if they wired it, it just threw it over.
Never got re manufactured.
Never got re manufactured, never got, and I thought that was being handled by it.
Yeah.
Definitely there was discussion about that, and that's good to know.
Because I stopped to look, because I looked at the grass that we planted.
Oh, yeah.
And I'm curious to know, what did we plant? Because that don't look very like a very, very big buffer strip. Either that, or it's been nubbed away as the field cultivator went by.
It, it sounded like a bigger area than it looks like.
Okay.
I mean, we actually staked where the boundaries were, and that's what was ceded to, so.
That's what I wondered.
Yeah.
I'm not accusing anybody, but I think that it's one of those deals that, um, wooden stakes, wooden last, don't last as long when someone's running a field cultivator, we need steel posts. Once, I'll go back out there and take a look at it and see what I, what I couldn't see in the grass, it's pretty high.
And we can find those corners back again sometimes when we're here. There's steel pins, there's steel pins in there, so they can, they can get an actual locate again, so. Um, DD thirty-eight, um, is the one Doug Marsla been working on, where the pipe went in the trail right of way and was full of roots, yeah, he's finished the relocated tile, um, he was telling Trish, I guess he'd hit quite a bit of sand putting that in, but got it put in successfully, um, far enough out that there should not be a problem with roots in that section ever again, so.
All right, my, their question from a couple of the farmers up there, the trail will pay part of that?
That's, oh, is that something different, right?
That's this.
Is this the same one? Well, this was in the trail before, and now we've moved it out of the trail.
Right, well, will the trail pay part of that being that it was there, and if not, the farmer says, "Why don't we go along there and pull all the trees out?" I said, "Well, that's a good point, but then you'll have the nature lovers with, they're out there looking at the birds and bees and everything else they're looking at, well, they're plugging up our tile, the railroad."
Does that do that in Bradgate? And the trees issue there?
I think the, didn't the city pay only, they paid some, but I was thinking it was just because they were part of the district.
The city or the?
Conservation would be part of the district.
Well, conservation pays their percentage of the district cost, so they'll, they'll pay their share. But as far as paying for the actual cost of the repair completely, no, no.
They'll stay up, pay a percentage of it.
Well, his complaint was is, the railroad, when they have the right of way, um, they usually spray everything, keep the trees back away from wherever the tile are, so they do a good job of killing the trees. Well, since that was deeded over to the trail system, they like the trees, they like the, well, the trees like our tile, and it was our tile, so now you kind of, who likes what? We don't like the, the people that are in the, that district don't like to pay to, you know, that tile was plugged, there was plum ground across the road, they couldn't even plant because there was so much water.
Mm-hmm.
Being held back, so, six and one and a half dozen the other.
This is another one of those probably where you need a legal opinion, but you'll probably get three different opinions.
And I was gonna say, it's just like the paper you just brought in for the other.
Yeah. I, yeah, I'd love to see an explanation from a drainage attorney. I mean, you could say the property, when it changed hands, serves a different purpose, and that different purpose plug the tile, but don't that person have a right to have trees on his property?
Mm-hmm.
Just like in.
It's not like they planted them, they're just naturally going.
Kind of saying that, uh, yes, they would pay for their portion of the repair, it's a point, but you're trying to see can, would they get rid of their trees? Okay, yeah.
And it's been reclassified, it hasn't been ca, it hasn't been, you've done with it in the computer since the railroad owned it, but if it was reclassified, it'd be specifically on that branch.
Well, the other thing is, we don't really know where the tile were. We, how many thousands of dollars would it take to go out and locate the tile so that we could say within an X amount of buffer, and we gotta pull all the trees off? Rick, we don't have that kind of money or manpower or.
Provision? No.
I mean, I mean, you could do that during your launch. What I'm just saying, there's a lot of tile that runs along there.
Yeah, along there or through there or whatever.
I mean, they could've been growing in there for years, the, it was a perfect storm, the.
And them trees were actually growing there when the rail were growing, because.
They only go back so far, just for their right.
With the DNR and the, and just the outlet in Bradgate.
Oh, yes, yes.
They have all kinds of trees and.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. So that didn't.
And that would be the same thing as the Bay and Worth Curry, then, because you still, you have to spray a.
Yeah, kill, spray roundup over the tiles, because the grass rests their cost and the problem. Some of those go down fifteen feet, yeah.
You can't really.
I think right now what you're stuck with is all the, the conservation would be paying is their share of an overall repair.
If it was reclassified, they'd be paying more, because it's right there, that branch, right?
Mm-hmm, yes.
So that's something to consider, if you.
Point of reference on this current repair, did they put any non-perforated tile in?
Yes, I think it was all non-perforated.
So, and gets back to Rick's point, you do, unfortunately, kind of deal with it as it comes up, but at least in this one, with non-perforated, the rip thing shouldn't be too much of an issue.
That's right.
Non-perforated in, is it double?
I think it's dual, yeah, yeah.
So it has been dealt with, they are gonna pair, pay their fair assessment, and that one should hopefully be done, and then I'm sure.
For a lifetime.
And I'm sure another one will come up.
Yeah.
Somewhere, somewhere.
Yes.
But, yeah, to go out there and try to, like, the conversation of locate everyone and pull trees and dig up tile, that's just not cost effective.
No. Okay. Wetlands, uh, we've, in July, we sent out letters for sub five and DD thirty-five branch C. We're starting to get some back, but we're, well, we'll keep a tally on those and a map showing which ones we have already, so, those are in the process before any project goes forward. Um, DD three, we talked about that already, we talked about the progress, um, progress is, is good now, they're doing a good job. Um, we're having the pre-construction meeting for DD two branch M, that's the Louise Piper project, we're having it Thursday here, Thursday at one thirty, if any of you wanna come. Um, it's Holland, um, which is good, I think it's Brian is the guy that will be here.
I hope Bill will make it, I'll be gone.
DD two.
Branch M. One thirty Thursday, okay. It's not a big deal, I mean, you know, we'll.
One thirty, here in this room.
You want me to put an agenda together, just in case?
Well, I mean, I, depending on if I'm going through town, I can swing through, but I don't.
I won't be here, I'll be out town. Rick, you'll be, or you'll be gone, so just.
In all cases, uh, the drainage closure, um, the pre-construction meeting, okay, everything is, is all put together, it's a part of the process.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, okay, I just had to get my mind on it right.
Holland guy did, and we're just finding out things like when they're starting, who will be on the job, estimated time of completion, it's all things I can pass along to you next week or whatever, so.
One thirty?
Yeah, yep.
At one thirty?
One thirty.
That's one, three oh.
He ever am.
Well, let's, you know, let's take the, take the chance that it's over.
That doesn't, that shouldn't be a big.
No, no, no. Great contractor, familiar with what we're asking for, we've worked with them before, you've worked with them before, straightforward project, yeah.
You know, we might check with Bill Bowden out there, um, sometimes he takes quite a bit of that field off for silage, so, depending on.
Oh.
That might be able, you know, I've got Bill's number, I can get it to you, but I don't know how much, how much he takes, and what, I can't remember how that field's planted this year, but over in that corner where that's starting, he might be doing silage over there, so.
Yeah, and isn't that owned by Dave? I had a, Bob Nellis was telling me he thought that that was Dave's ground, but. You know, we might check with Bill Bowden out there, um, sometimes he takes quite a bit of that field off for silage, so.
Oh.
That might be able, you know, I've got Bill's number, I can get it to you. But I don't know how much, how much he takes. And what, I can't remember how that field's planted this year, but over in that corner where that's starting, he might be doing silage over there, so.
Yeah, and isn't that owned by Dave? Bob Nellis was telling me he thought that that was Dave's ground, but. Okay. Well, I, yeah, and, uh, I was talking to Trish before I came in about, uh, someone in the area that could maybe take silage off. And if, if that's a name, that's, that would be great, so. Um, DD six tile down by Thor. Um, Peterson split up and had two crews working. They got about one week left on the upper part of the main, and they probably got one to two weeks, I'd say two weeks maybe on the bottom part of the main.
Connect them.
To connect them, yeah. We've checked back and forth a couple of times, they've checked to be sure elevations are okay. Um, the old tile snaked around a little bit, we've had to move with some elbows a little bit to make it work, but it, they're, they're good to work with on anything like that, so.
It looks like they were, the priority, they looked like they were going across Thor Blacktop and kinda winding, must be your stakes out there.
Oh, yeah.
So, it looked like somebody was out in there either gonna cut. And, cause they, they got quite a bit of that laid to the east.
Yeah, yeah, they do, there, it's going well.
Going in, the only way I know is that's the way we're going back, way to Eagle Grove, cause the highway's still closed.
Oh, sure.
Taking a long time.
Oh, my God, well, they're waiting for Blacktop, but I think the piper through the road. They haven't been able to get a crew there to Blacktop the patch.
Oh, okay, yeah, I see that detour in there, okay. So, yeah, that's, that's what's happening on six. I'm gonna go out and check on three and, um, I looked at one-twenty-five coming down, I'm gonna check on four. Um, contractor's going pretty good on four, they're gonna bring another excavator in here shortly, so you'll see more progress. And we're intending to use the contractor that got that bid on four to do the downstream outlet work. And if we get something worked out, Rasmussen, uh, we'll, we'll work with him too on that.
So, will you get either Trish or somebody and let them know on the, those pipe?
Yes, yep, yep.
Potential on them pipe?
Yep, yep. I put to notify the, talk to the landowners and talk to them about what, what you guys have talked about today.
Awesome, awesome.
So. Got names and numbers. I'm, that's what I've got written down.
Okay.
You got a stack there?
I do. Um, BD thirty-three, branch D.
Williams?
Yeah, we're at the completion and the damage report hearing. We're gonna have to set the hearing to be able to get formal.
Damage report.
To the. I'd rather do it at this stage, considering the project, but, so. Can I go ahead and put that on the agenda for next week?
To set the appraisal hearing.
Set the appraisal hearing, yeah.
I would think so.
And.
Bless you.
How about completion also?
Well, we can have the completion hearing, man, right?
We can set.
No, but she can set it.
Set the date? Set the date?
So, if, say, when the numbers coincide, would you need a week after? Could you do it, I mean, how long?
It'll take twenty, do we have to have, uh, twenty days, huh?
Between.
I think that's just a twenty day one, isn't it, completion?
Yes, yeah. Cause technically, the only notice goes to the people you went through.
So, if the, if the damage was agreed upon, you need twenty days from the time it all is agreed upon? Or twenty days from the time that they give you their?
Twenty days from the time you accept the report to when you have the hearing on the report.
Well, however, we gotta make that.
Right, so I set the hearing.
So, next week you can set it.
And we can set it for twenty days. Twenty-some days following. And then that gives, um.
So, if you set it on the eighteenth, then you're going twenty days from the day you.
That'll spur the landowners to see the damages that I send out in the report. And to make any additional claims outside of that right of way.
So, it would basically be twenty days from the eighteenth then?
Yeah, like tonight.
Would be the night left over.
We gotta be careful, cause that's Thanksgiving Day in Canada.
Well.
Maybe begone now?
I don't know.
He may go to Canada, then it's Columbus Day deserved.
He deserves it here, we don't shut down for that.
That makes sense, though.
Yeah.
So, set it for the eighteenth, to put it on the agenda to.
And we'll set the completion for the night.
I can do that, and.
That would be just basically two parties, wouldn't it?
Williams, there's like three there.
Four.
Four.
Four people have damages.
Williams, Williams, Erickson's and Wallace.
All right.
Well, the two Williams, so, yeah, of course.
Okay.
All right, he's on here now. Brings up the other thing with DD eleven to one. Um, okay. I don't know how to proceed with this, but the private part was the ag well closure on Tom and, um, John Fulton. I, Tom came in and told me to put on the agenda that we need, um, let me call this, an annexation from eleven to eleven-one, which is the same, the other problem from five.
Isn't that kinda funny? I mean, I, I don't think it's laughably funny.
No, but it's ironic.
It's ironic that, that one, on one hand, you don't do that, on the other hand, they have to.
Yeah.
So, I just don't know how to proceed with that either.
Can't make this stuff up, can you, Rick?
No, you don't.
Because. I don't even, yeah, I don't know what to do.
Well, how much legality does that involve?
Well, I know they're, um, probably Dave Johnson. I mean.
How many acres, we're looking at, have to annex in?
Two-something.
Two hundred and some acres. Oh, landowner. Two hundred.
Do you need? And I don't know, this is determined by. I, so, how do you do the classification? I don't know how you do the classification.
You try and compare it to the land around it that's in the district already and do something comparable.
So, they, do they have to follow the same procedure that the drainage district does when you have an engineering two-three quarters length? Or does just the engineer go ahead and do that?
I've seen it multiple times with just the engineer doing it.
Okay.
Yeah.
I don't wanna.
It's usually just a few parcels and not much land and.
But you're still basically.
Here comes, I don't know why it doesn't follow over here.
Yeah.
I mean, it just.
Carmen?
I'm flabbergasted, I guess, that, that's okay then?
Well, we're, that's what we're kind of.
Yours also.
Well, I know.
Yeah. Now, that, that's all we're paying.
See your opinion when they're totally guessed it on your side, but it's okay for their side.
Yeah.
That's why we said it's.
I don't understand your opinion.
That's why I mentioned to Rick, it's, it's ironic.
It is, it's, like you said, it's.
Why don't we hire another engineering firm?
No.
It's, it's just ironic.
Well, Carmen, this is the way I feel. The muddier the water gets, the closer we get towards December. Do I have the ability to just pass that chair and go back down to the end? I damn sure don't wanna be second to that one.
You're gonna be right there, buddy.
Get it, get it in the right direction. We're gonna push him upstream if we have to.
But, you know, it, it's like, just like you said, it was, it wasn't good when somebody wanted to do it, but then they, and here.
Yeah.
Yeah, well.
Parties.
Yeah, it is, I know what you're saying.
Yeah.
And as far as that drainage well closure project was a private project, correct?
Right.
Yeah.
But, is this something then, how involved are, how involved are we as the trustees in this project? With Trish's comment that.
Basically, our, our part here is just to make sure it gets annexed in, so that they, they are paying for the future maintenance of that ditch.
Yeah.
Cause now their water's going to that ditch rather than that sinkwell.
Right.
So, that's our.
Yes.
So, are you annexing the?
The acres that went into the sinkwell previously, now they're going to the open ditch, so they need to be annexed in and pay for it.
So, is it the parties, the, the sinkwell closure drainage are paying, or getting annexed in to the drain? They're going into a different district, different water then, is that?
A different sub-district.
I mean, honestly.
So, they need to get annexed into that something.
Yeah.
Can, you, Rick, did you say that?
Unless you take the slope of the line.
Can the engineer look at it and say, yeah, here's the. He's gotta be voted on something along.
Well, the board takes actions to accept the.
Once you've seen what would be an annexed in.
Yeah. Yeah, and you have an opportunity. Yeah.
Trish, do you have any information that, that someone's, look at someone being, you know, engineering firm? They've got information for what, and Rick asked about the acres? Is it, is it that close?
Well, I'll just show you the map that we were supplying. My concerns is, very seldom you have a nice straight line like that, like that, no watershed.
Yep.
I just don't know, I mean, I don't know how to proceed when, I can't proceed on one and say that would pay and not on.
It's right this page, but then when I turn the next page.
Rock and orange, buddy. Yeah, these people have asked to be annexed in to.
You either want it right or you.
One to one.
Cause obviously their water.
Comes down into this bull ditch or this empty ditch. But this is, does not look right when you have a perfectly straight line.
Yeah, that, yeah, doesn't work that way.
I, I think we need to have somebody look at this blighter and determine watershed.
Yeah, I see what your point is, it's very unusual. Never, never seen it got off like that. Cause if you bet on, you get two acres, two acres, five acres there.
There you go.
And that might be all it is, but it's never just go.
Yeah.
Not only that, but if you're pulling water from there, the, the natural course of anything above it, if drink water moving below it, it's gonna follow the water moving below it, so you're gonna have water coming out of the upper.
Yeah.
It is, build the fence there. Our suggestions are.
Well, we need to hire an engineer to do a study of this, other than that one that was submitted, or we can go back to him? Let's go back to that where he prepared this and ask him.
I think so.
Let's do that. Where did that, where did I see that? That's right here. Let's give him a call, have a conversation, why that lines are straight, so he gives a real good answer.
Yep.
Explain himself, put it that way.
Yep, agreeable.
Okay. I'll make that phone call after a meeting.
Thank you.
I know you wanted to do it. All right. You're still getting to do it. Anything else?
Well, as you know, I've seen a drainage assessment.
I got a call on one.
I'll be expecting so.
You'll get a lot. There's a lot of, um, districts.
Can I have that covered, let us, I get a small number, I don't have a big one. Yeah, they should tell me before you on one-twenty-six.
Trish handled that, I think.
Yeah, I talked to Kendra and Brandon.
And was it classified? Or no?
Honestly, I wish I knew the answer first. Um, it comes down to the original levy.
Wasn't that dick?
Didn't have enough levy for it when I was pretty sure I took into consideration everything. So, I don't know where the missing factor is.
On which one?
One-twenty-six.
That one-twenty-six, where they were beginning the meeting.
Happens frequently.
Do you think you get all the bills pulled together, all the expenses to the district and then?
I mean, I need to plan it on other things. I consider all of the warrants that are outstanding, the interest on them. I take into consideration open ditches, if there's, within the next three years, going to be, um, Russian weed control. Um, any major repairs that I have that might be coming up. And it still doesn't work out.
If you don't get any levy in time, you're in trouble again.
Yeah.
Go too long. Has there been, this one section been repaired three times? Like the interstate that you know of?
Blowout or something sad?
An intake, the way it sounded, it was some intake.
Yeah, there's an intake, um, south of the care center that has kind of sunk in in, um.
So, between there.
Brayden Meyer, just look at it.
Was it a new intake they put in, that wasn't?
Is that the one that, south of High Cap then, between High Cap and them?
It's north.
Or the High Cap and south of the care center.
South of the care center in a little bit. Yeah, south of the care center. The problem with Francis, when he called, was a, I think it was like a private tile connection that was not connected properly. To the south of the care center and to the west was the wet place. And to the north and to the west of the school.
Roger and Marlene Johnson. South of the care center and Brent Farms there.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know Brent Farms, that's true.
Had an intake, was it, you know, sepple problem or something like that.
Wasn't, wasn't the majority of the, the cost that was levied though, the, what wasn't picked up before? Or how much was the repairs and how much?
Oh, it wasn't really, the repairs weren't much.
That's what I thought, yeah.
So, the repairs really weren't that whole amount, it was just other things that were missed originally.
A smaller part of it, really.
Thirty thousand dollars covered, slammed. He got thirty thousand dollars, is that what he complained about? Almost forty. Forty. Most of the back, the other, you know. He said that, he said there was forty dollars, forty thousand dollars was repairs done.
No.
No, I said, I thought that'd be an awful lot of repairs.
So, you're saying the portion of that came from this?
Original installation that was missed.
That was either probably towards the tail end of the project.
Cause the original installation was levy.
Right.
Then they got another levy and.
Finish it up.
Probably over, carryover from what was missed.
Just like one-twenty-five is gonna have some current and some that comes in later.
You wait for everything, the interest would be too high, so do the right thing.
You gave them kind of a summary, didn't you, of, cause it.
I showed them like, everything, I showed them how I levied it as far as the interest that. There are future collections out there yet, because there was waiver payment. I think it was waived for ten or twenty years, I can't remember. So, there's payments and interest still coming into the account. So, I did the difference between the total debt and the future payment.
Okay.
So, that's just one of those.
Well, what their question was, then you mentioned, if you can show them the recent levy documentation of what was missed, not really missed or wasn't available.
Yeah, wasn't available at the time of the first.
At the first levy, and show that, and repair bills.
And what has not been paid was the repair bills, it was some, um, engineering that was left out, you know, like the final stuff. Um, I think maybe you had looked at the repair thing with.
Yes.
Brayden Meyer.
Yes.
And there was damage payment, like your easements and that. And then there was, I just let you know, there was a sixteen thousand dollars that was put into the account at one time incorrectly. For secondary roads, I think it was a FEMA thing or something.
So, that went in and got taken back out.
And so, it was taken out, so then when they see the, the. And so it was taken out, so then when they see the, the...
Okay.
It's not actually anything that was charged to the district from secondary roads or anything.
Well, I think if you can itemize that to as best as possible...
I gave them a lift.
That that would hopefully alleviate some of their concerns of why they get this big levy recently, yeah.
Well, it's all you do.
Valid explanation, I mean, that, I understand that, I mean, and I also understand why they didn't like getting a forty thousand dollar levy. But if you could break down the, what we just talked about, and if they have that, I mean, I don't know what else we can do at this point.
Yep.
Okay.
So there's...
I can move the ground grain.
Mention one thing real quick.
Nope, too late. Go ahead, go ahead.
Just, it's, it's down the road, I hate to bring up any more drainage stuff, but I don't know if I mentioned this. It would be a joint Humboldt Cassoot, I believe it's number two, right in a very corner from the county. There it goes, the outlet goes underneath Highway 15, it's called McKnight Point.
Oh, yeah.
Right by a huge state road culvert, it's a surface drainage culvert. The west side of that, probably, well, it's impacted that, uh, outlet of that tile. There's trees, there's possibly a huge culvert settled, don't really know. But it's, it's, the outlet is, is not right from that history tile. On the west side of Highway 15, it is.
It's a state land.
And so it's a concern, you know, I physically looked at it, I was over in that area with all the other stuff here just a couple of weeks ago. Um, I'm just bringing it up, it's something down the road that will probably, you know, have to get a work order. But there again, it's a whatever size tile, right, you know, be right next to this huge drainage tile of the, going underneath the road for the surface water, so you got kind of different things going on.
So that on the east or the west side of the bridge?
And the tile's on the east side, right?
Yeah.
The 15 turns at dogs, is that where you're at?
Right there, dog, go straight north, go cross road, 15 continues on to West Bend.
Ford West Bend.
Ford West Bend, that intersection, north side of whatever that is.
Northeast corner of that intersection.
Yeah. Well, northwest, I mean, that's probably for you, it's on the west side of Highway 15.
Highway 15, yeah.
Yep, and it's still in Humboldt County, still, it's a joint...
It's just the border, I mean, it can't be a spinning distance.
It isn't, it's, you go, no, uh...
Tell them we have a R, so I can see if it's really a R program here and there.
Oh, God, hell, oh.
It's written.
It's right, but it's still, it's a Humboldt Cassoot district that outlets, one of those tile that outlets there. And it is, it, there's legitimate concern. It is goofed up, where there's a big pipe settled on it, the trees are not helping, you know, got overgrown down there at the outlet, you know, just dumps out and...
Kinda heads it towards timber ground there.
What's that?
It hits towards a lot of timber down in that area below the river bottom.
So I'm just saying, you know, that's gonna be, but it's not a very cut and dried deal because I'm sure it's gonna involve the state, cause it's there right away, cause it's a state road.
We'll send Trish up there, she'll get it.
No, but it's just something that, you said it's drainage stuff, there's something down those roads that'll have to be addressed.
All right, yeah, I got a first and a second. Call the paper.
I did.
Carl and Bruce.
Either one, just put it there. We still got the paper.
Aye.
Aye. Oh, she carries a lot of drainage. Do we cook each other for Paul or after?
Yeah, we can.
Who's taking care of Frank? Where is Green District Four located?
Shall I shut it off, so you know?
Yeah. Shut it off. You're talking about the charasmus and...
Oh, we're talking about... It's, it's south of...
It's opening a little bit to do, it's gonna be a short one.